I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. Pursuant to school board policy 139, school board member participation in meetings by electronic communications, school board member Diane Ralston will participate in this meeting through electronic means, home or home, due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance. The clerk will so note in the minutes of the meeting. A motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda.
Ms. Jackson?
Ms. Waugh?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Madam Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I have a second.
Is there a please vote? Ms. Ralston? How do you vote?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, two not present at vote. Latif Zargarpur, motion passed.
Moving on to the motion to enter closed session, a motion is in order.
Ms. Jackson? I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with staff the appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific officers and employees under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Two, to review and take action on matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record for individual students as provided by Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A2 and 8. Three, to consult with division counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation involving employment and educational matters as provided by Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1, 2, and 7. And four, to consult with staff and legal counsel regarding the legal requirements and procedures for collective bargaining by school board employees, which requires legal advice and guidance as provided by Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8. And five, to consult with staff and legal counsel regarding the acquisition of real property for the construction of an elementary school where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the school board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-37113. And six, to receive information and discussion and discuss with staff plans related to the security of school board facilities, buildings, and structures, including the safety of persons using such facilities, buildings, and structures pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A19 and 2.2-3705.214.
Is there a second?
Madam Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I have a second.
Please vote. Ms. Ralston?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, two not present at vote. Latif Zargarpur, motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and will return to open session in one hour.
the Prince William County School Board is returning from closed session. A closed session certification motion is in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of June 15, 2022, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Ms. Jessie seconds any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Next is the approval of appointments and releases. A motion is in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I have a second.
Outstanding. Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Next is the 10.02 approval of a school placement recommendation. A motion is in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that for the reasons set forth in S.M.A.P.D.'s letter of May 24, 2022, the Prince William County School Board confirm S.M.A.P.D. decision to uphold the school's recommendation to place student P.L.C. 22-005 at Independence Non-Tourinal School.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I have a second.
Ms. Williams, second. Any discussion? Okay, please vote. And on this matter, I'll be voting no. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Ralston votes no.
The vote is unanimous, eight no. Motion failed.
Okay, folks, next we're going to our Thriving Futures Focus tonight, and I'd like to thank Diana Galata as well as their staff for their assistance and coordination for putting this presentation together for each meeting. We truly appreciate it. I know it is a lot of work. Now, on to our favorite part of the meeting. Good evening. We are pleased to continue our launching Thriving Futures Focus to recognize several outstanding students and employees this evening. Over the last two meetings, we've recognized our outstanding robotics teams. Due to a scheduling conflict, two winning elementary school teams could not attend an earlier meeting, but they are here tonight. We also have a high school team to recognize that recently earned an outstanding award. Mr. Justin Wilk, Potomac Magisterial District Representative, will recognize our team from the Ashland Elementary School. Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. It is my honor to introduce just there last night, the awesome, amazing, the wins earned by the Ashland Elementary Falcon Bots. They're so impressive due to the obstacles they conquered this year. The team started the season three months later than usual due to COVID-19, coming together with all new coaches and few students with any robotics experience. The Falcon Bots won an award in each event they competed in, including the Excellence in Judges Award at regional competitions, the Amaze Award at the state level competition, and being selected to attend the VEX IQ World Championships in Dallas, Texas. At Worlds, they were recognized in their division with another amazing award presented to a team that has built the most consistently high-scoring and competitive robot. This robot shows high-quality construction and the robot programming is effective, successful, and very consistent. That was a quote. The coaches are Ryan Deloney, head coach Lisa Duranczyk, Venkat Avasala-Rala. Principal is Anna Houseworth. The assistant principal is Shayna Robinson. Coach Deloney will now recognize the team members and say a few words.
Thank you all. We appreciate it. We're pleased to be here tonight with the Ashland Elementary Falcon Bots VEX IQ team. My name is Ryan Deloney. I'm the head coach for the team. We also have post-Lisa Duranczyk and Coach Venkat Avasala-Rala with us as well. We did bring our two teams who went to Worlds in Dallas, Texas to include, we have Erin, Owen, McKenzie, Caleb, Eli, Isaac, Jake, Christian, Sidvik, and Aria, all here. They were the real stars of the season for sure. As mentioned, we did begin a little late than we normally would have. That being said, even though we were all three brand-new volunteer coaches with no robotics experience, we brought our passion from STEM, from our professional lives, to the coaching experience, brought together, as mentioned, students with, this was very new for them, and melded them together very quickly. And that was the real success story of how the students came together for their exciting season in STEM. Lisa, you want to say a couple?
So, the Ashland Falcon Bots competed in some regional competitions this year in Northern Virginia over the winter. In those competitions, we had teams that were in the finals in each competition, and we also won an award at each of those events. We won the Judges Award for Team B at one of our events. And that award is for demonstrating perseverance, teamwork, improvement at the competition worthy of judges' note. So that was really great. That was our first award to get our season off to a great start. The next award that we won was the Elementary School Excellence Award for one of our teams that's not here tonight, and that's for overall outstanding robotics elementary school program at the competition. Also, our teams performed very highly in the robot skills competitions, and they individually demonstrate their robotic skills in both driving and autonomous or coding programs at these events in those competitions. As a result of their performance in those skills events, we had all four Ashland Falcon Bots teams were invited to the Virginia State VEX Robotics Competition for the Elementary School Division, and that was in March. So, this was really a huge accomplishment for these 20 kids, 18 new kids to robotics. We were really proud of them. All four of our teams finished in the top 10 at the state's competition. They ranked fourth, fifth, sixth, and 10th, so very good showing at the states. And our Team A also won the Amaze Award at the state competition as well. So, because we finished fourth and fifth for two of our teams at the state competitions, they did receive invitations to go to Worlds. And those are the kids that are here with you tonight. So they had an amazing opportunity to really collaborate with other teams from across the United States. There were 49 states represented and 40 countries from around the world. They got to work with these different teams. We thanked their parents for supporting them so that they could participate in this event. And the teams performed very well in their divisions. Both of our teams finished in the top third of all the VEX IQ elementary teams at VEX Worlds. There were 560 elementary teams there.
Wonderful, Mr. Ensign.
Very good.
We do have some tokens of appreciation. Thanking again the board for all its support, our principals, to include Dr. Jack's Pryor, Ms. Denise Carroll, the Spark Foundation, and do want to recognize we have for Dr. McDade, Dr. Latif, and Mr. Wilk, medal from Worlds, as well as a little additional item for recognition.
Wow. Thank you very much. Another round of applause for the Ashland Falcon Bots. Congratulations again. While you're coming up here, I'm going to introduce, we have Mrs. Lisa Zargarpur of the, that's all right, we'll get it, of the Coles Magisterial District, and she will introduce the winning teams from the district.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. The Marshall Elementary Eagle Bots One Team earned six awards this year, breaking the school record. In the regional competition, the team earned first place in robot performance and second place in the Champions Award. For the state competition, the team won second place in robot design and third place in robot performance. And in the Remote Rumble, the team won first place in robot design and second place in robot performance. Head coach is Ronald Louis and assistant coach is Timothy Montgomery. Principal is Dr. Chris Bach and assistant principal is Michael Dugger. Coach Lee will now recognize the team members and say a few words.
Great, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the team members of the Prince William County School Board, Chairman-at-Large, Dr. Latif, and Vice Chairwoman, our Coles District Representative, Ms. Zargarpur, also a nearby neighbor of mine. To all the guests, to all the recipients, and to everyone watching, thank you so much for having us here tonight. This is truly an honor. We feel very special in this occasion to show the demonstrated success of our Eagle Bots and their hard work and amazing journey this past school year as we work towards six awards. So I want to quickly introduce our team members. You know, I'll start from my right. This is Robbie, you know, my youngest son. I think some of you might know this gentleman right here, Dean Latif. He might be related to someone. We got our superstar team captain, Sebastian, and we got our master builder, Ellis, right here. And we got our Master of Endurance, Bethany, and our Master of Performance, Betsy. And as you can see behind me, we got Mr. Duggard, our vice principal, and last but not least, our wonderful principal, Dr. Bach. Unfortunately, the other coaches can't be here, and we're missing two members of the team, but we are all very delighted that our students could be displayed on this tremendous effort and being recognized. So I want to thank all the Eagle Bots for all their hard work and dedication this past school year. Thank you so much. There's a couple of other folks that I want to thank as well that made our journey possible this year. The Marshall staff, our principal, vice principal, everyone included at Marshall Elementary, for giving us the needed resources and support that we need to be successful this year. In addition to that, the Marshall families, all the support, dedication, encouragement given to the Eagle Bots, each one of our students, and the robotics club. Without them, our journey would not be as successful as we had this year. Also to Ms. Denise Carroll, yes, Ms. Denise Carroll, for always motivating the Eagle Bots and for being a great mentor and friend these past five years for us. And to Prince William County School Board and the school system for enabling and providing an opportunity for our student to pursue their passion through the STEM program as well as funding for our registration. So I do want to ask the Prince William County School Board for two things. Yeah, number one, consider raising the registration limit of all Prince William County elementary school from one registration to two registration, giving our students an opportunity to have more students compete for the Prince William County School. This will provide up to an additional 640 students to compete at the robotics competitions without worrying about financial constraints. Number two, consider chaining Ms. Carroll to her desk for the next 10 years.
Very good.
I want to see her and, you know, all these Eagle Bot students graduate high school under her tenure. She has been a blessing to all of us, and we greatly appreciate her dedication, commitment to this wonderful program. And to conclude my remarks, to the Eagle Bots, thank you and good luck in middle school. To the family and friends, continue to encourage and motivate your child and our students. To the Prince William County Board, thank you for this time in recognizing our talented students and support in this robotics program. And lastly, a coin from Benjamin Franklin, a quote, "When in doubt, Eagle Bot out." Thank you.
Nicely said, sir. Thank you, Coach Lou. Ms. Zargarpur, Osborn Park.
I love it. You know, Dr. Latif, I was just thinking about how I would have loved robotics when I was a kid, but I don't think we had them when I was that age. So, you guys are there. I would love to see, I can't wait till next year. All right, the Osborn Park High School Team 2068, the Metal Jackets, was founded in 2007 as a STEM initiative for inspired students in the fields of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. The Metal Jackets have competed in the first FIRST, capital, First Robotics Competition, FRC, for 14 years, and they earned the title of Rookie All-Star Team of the Year at the First Robotics Competition World Championship in 2008. In 2017, the team once again attended the first world championship, competing against teams from 44 different nations. In 2019 and 2020, the Metal Jackets won the prestigious Chairman's Award, which is the highest honor any team could win in First Robotics. The Metal Jackets also play a significant role in our community with each team member required to volunteer a minimum of 50 hours, in addition to serving as mentors for the elementary and middle school teams. More than 70 students participate on the Metal Jackets teams. This year's team accomplishments include First Robotics Competition Excellence in Engineering, First Robotics Competition Regional Qualifier, Alliance Captain at Competition, Quarterfinals Qualifier, VEX Worlds Qualified, one team there, VEX Virginia State Qualified. We had five teams. I'm good at reading, but. Coaches are Martin Donnelly, William Shreve, and Melanie Ali. Mentor is Jeff Schoolcraft, and the principal is Lisa Marie Kane. I now invite the coaches to recognize their teams.
Thank you, and thank you for having us here. My name is Mr. Donnelly, and I want to first start off by saying thank you for all of the funding that we do get for these programs. They really can change students' lives. With our team, we run seven VEX teams and one FRC team, which totals somewhere in the neighborhood of an operating budget of $70,000 a year. So, with that being said, all of these awards come from students. There's no mentor on this team that actually runs anything with a robot. It's amazing to see what they can do when you give them the creative freedom to work. And I think everything else you've already said there, so I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to one of my team members.
Hi, I'm Kira Schoolcraft, the president of the 2068 Metal Jackets. I would like to highlight the team members we have here. We have all four seniors on our FRC team, myself, Costa Calodellis, Jason Huang, and Alex Farmer. We also have Jackie Garcia, Melissa George, Maya Sarma, Tristan Nguyen, Phalen Becker, Sky Auger, Rose Angela Lee, and Sarah Purdy. I would like to thank the school board for their continued support through my robotics journey from third grade up until this year, 12th grade. And because of that support, I will be moving to major in robotics in my future. I would like to request from the school board that we see more support for our girls in STEM. I am very pleased to see so many girls here today from our younger elementary students. However, my journey in robotics has been hard as a girl, and I would like to see more support for girls in STEM. Thank you.
So the team asked me to step forward and speak about their win for Virginia High School League. So, this journey started eight years ago when I was told robotics could not be a varsity sport. And I was like, no one says no to me for my kids. So, we went back in again in 2019, and we started making some friends with Virginia High School League. And for those who aren't familiar, those are the organizations who mandate our sports for the high school, the high school-level sports. And we invited someone from Virginia High School League to Woodbridge High School, and they were a judge. And he walked into the gym, and there were 50 middle school, 50 high school kids, and he goes, they have their face painted, and they have capes, and people are screaming, and it's crazy. He goes, I get it. And he was our champion there. So, Mr. Wilson for Virginia High School League helped us form this Virginia High School League to become a varsity sport. And it wasn't an easy journey, and we had a senior who graduated in 2019, Mr. Jack Palmer. He can't be with us because he's studying abroad in Spain right now as a neuroscience major. He went with me to Charlottesville and sat as the only student representative from first, with first VEX C botball, and we wrote the rubric for Virginia High School League to be a varsity sport for other teams to be judged against. The reason why they did that is they found out at a tournament that Prince William County Schools was way ahead of other school divisions. They already gave stipends to our coaches. They already allowed our students to letter. We already got cords for our seniors. That wasn't the case across the Commonwealth of Virginia. These kids who stand behind me and those who passed already in the last three or four years that have moved on, they were the ones who wanted Southwest Virginia to get the same opportunities that you were getting here in Virginia in Prince William County Schools. So they went forward and moved forward. They went to Richmond and petitioned the delegates there to make robotics a varsity sport. This happened in 2019, 2020. COVID shut it down, and no one could qualify for Virginia High School League. This is the first year that Virginia High School League had the opportunity for schools to apply for Virginia High School League status, and the team here behind me submitted the first submission, 23-page application with all the technical aspects about the team, how much community service they do, all of those things, and a six-minute video. There were only three schools across the Commonwealth that won trophy class. So the team behind me is the team that will have the next flag in the gym. It'll say, basketball, baseball, cross-country, robotics, swimming, track. Ooh, these are the kids behind you that have that opportunity. They are the only school in Northern Virginia that won this event, that won trophy class. It was only won by a team from Richmond and in Blacksburg. They are the best team that could win this. They are the most giving of all of here. So I'm very proud of them. I'd like to thank Kelly Gardner, who has helped us here at the corporate level, and all of the activity directors who embrace robotics as a Virginia High School League sport. Kelly Gardner announced today that not only would he be helping us to make sure that banner gets into the gym, but he said, if a team wins at a state level in a varsity sport, they get a ring. Well, today he just told me that these kids will too be getting a varsity sport ring in robotics. Thank you, everybody.
Excellent. Well, congratulations again to our award-winning teams. And for those of you at home wondering why we have so many robotics teams in Prince William County doing so well, it's been a journey. As Ms. Carroll pointed out, we've been committed to it. We haven't even brought in all the other teams who qualified for the world championships. We've only recognized teams that have won international or national awards and state awards. So we want to thank you. So at this point, we're going to ask the teams to come up, take a picture. We'll do them one team at a time with the school board. Do the Falcon Bots first, and then we'll do the Eagle Bots, and then the Osborn Park team. And the administrators can come up as well. So come on up, folks, and we'll just take a quick break for pictures. Okay, at this time, it is now my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Adele Jackson, uh, our vice chair, the Brentsville District Representative for our next recognitions. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. Good evening. The Unity Reed High School JROTC, I think we're waiting on. Yeah. Okay, all right. Good evening. The Unity Reed High School JROTC Drill Team is the 2022 Air Force Association Virginia State Drill Team Champion. Unity Reed High School is the only school to attain this accomplishment in the state of Virginia, with 31 schools eligible to complete. The team earned six first-place trophies and won second-place award in seven different events, leading to earning the overall first-place trophy and becoming the 2022 AFA Virginia State Drill Champions. Awesome. Technical Sergeant Tina Lang, U.S. Air Force retired, leads this outstanding group of cadets. Dr. Richard Nichols is the principal. Technical Sergeant Lang will share the names of cadets here this evening.
I also want to recognize my senior aerospace science instructor, Lieutenant Colonel Darrell Robinson. We wouldn't have one without him. He is also part of our team and our mentor, and he spent many hours driving these kids home late in the evening as well. So first, I want to recognize Colonel Robinson. All the kids standing behind me, uh, are, if I can see all your faces, Quentin, Ashley, Ashley, Serenity, Phoe, Kalem, Jocelyn, Jonathan, Alejandra, Kate, Kevin, Josh, Brianna, Erica, Raoul, Ben, and Jocelyn. Did I miss anybody? We had 23 members on the team, and the majority of them, uh, showed up tonight, and I'm very proud of them.
Okay, well, congratulations to the Unity Reed High School JROTC Drill Team Cadets. Uh, next, my pleasure to introduce Mr. Justin Wilk again of the Potomac Magisterial District for the next set of recognitions. Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Dr. Latif, again. Um, I am proud to share that last month, the Forest Park High School Crew Team finished 10th in the nation in the Scholastic Rowing Association Championship Regatta. Prior to this competition, the team earned three separate first-place wins and two second-place wins in different regatta competitions this spring. Their coach is Gretchen Thompson, and principal is Richard Martinez. I'm honored to have you here. Often a sport that does not get highlighted, but this national recognition, I would like Coach Thompson to share a few words, please.
Thank you. Crew is a, uh, club sport in, in Prince William County, and, um, it's sponsored by fundraisers and with parents, and we row on the aqua quan, which is a beautiful body of water. So if you ever get the opportunity, there's lots of Learn to Rose, and you can row all your life. So there's plenty of opportunity to get out there and do this, but we encourage our, um, athletes from all of our schools to, um, try a, a new sport. You don't get to do it in Little League. And this particular group of, of girls, it was a junior four, so the four, um, actually there's five girls, because one of them is a coxswain, and they're telling you what to do, while the other ones have to do it. And, um, they are all going to be coming back, and we are hoping for another successful year next year. The only, only one person isn't coming back because she's moving out of the, the state, but they work tirelessly. We, we practice on the water from 3:00 in the afternoon to 6:00 at night, and, um, we're very, very proud of them. Thank you.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you.
Continue.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Also from the Potomac District, congratulations to, call him Chef Ronald Evans, culinary arts teacher at Potomac High School. Mr. Evans is the recipient of the 2022 Virginia Pro Start Educator Excellence Award. The award recognizes a teacher who has shown dedication to his or her students and the Pro Start, and provides a career and educational program that brings the food service industry and the classroom together. Teaching high school students culinary skills and restaurant management principles, Chef Evans is an outstanding employee to our school system and to our students. The principal is Brandon Bowles. Congratulations, sir.
Okay. Congratulations, Forest Park Crew Team and Mr. Evans. I will now ask Mr. Mrs. Jackson of the Brentsville District to recognize our next few students. Mrs. Jackson?
Fincenzo Cavetto, Patriot High School Wrestler, who recently graduated, was awarded the National High School Wrestling Coaches Honor for Leadership and Character. Fincenzo could not be here tonight because he is in training with George Mason University Wrestling Team and is competing in a tournament. His coach, Rich Edwards, and principal, Dr. Michael Bishop. Congratulations, Fincenzo. I am also excited to kick off the recognition of this year's National Merit Scholarship Program Award winners. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation named seven Prince William County students as the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Winners. These students were chosen from a pool of more than 15,000 semifinalists. This year's National Merit Scholarship Program began in October 2020, when high school juniors took the PSAT and MSQT, which served as an initial, initial screen of program entrance. The highest-scoring participants in each state, representing less than 1% of the nation's high school seniors, were named semi-finalists on state representational basis. Rathaqah N. Bawa from Patriot High School is a National Merit Scholarship winner who will be attending the University of Virginia next year as Global Studies major on a pre-med track with the hopes of becoming a doctor in the near future. Over the summer, she will be doing a UVA residential, meaning that she'll be taking a couple courses on campus beginning in July. Principal Patriot High School is Dr. Michael Bishop.
Wahahaha. Congratulations. I am pleased, next, to introduce our Gainesville Magisterial District Representative, Mrs. Jen Wall, who will recognize three additional National Merit Scholarship Award winners. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. It is my honor to acknowledge Sahas Gouda, a National Merit Scholarship Award winner at Battlefield High School, um, who is now a graduate of Battlefield High School, who will attend the University of Virginia as an Ekel Scholar to study economics and political science. I also want to rec- recognize Atish Sethi, also a graduate of Battlefield High School and the Governor's School at Innovation Park, who will be attending Brown University with a dual concentration in both biochemistry and computational biology on a pre-medicine track. In the future, he plans to attend medical school to focus on cardiology. Uh, Atish won the National Merit Truist Scholarship, a corporate-based National Merit Scholarship. And my third person is Raj Joshi, uh, recently also graduated from Battlefield High School and will be attending University of Virginia to study human biology on the pre-med track. So congratulations to all three of you. This is fantastic achievement. We're very proud of you. And the principal there is Battlefield's principal, Ryan Ferrera. Thank you, students, for coming in tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Wall. Mrs. Argarpur of the Coles District will recognize our neck, our next National Merit Scholarship winners.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I'm proud to, uh, honored to, to, to introduce to you Ikra Ahmad, recently graduated concurrently, concurrently from Osborne Park High School and the Governor's School at Innovation Park. She will be attending the College of William &amp; Mary in the fall, where she plans to double major in neuroscience and history and minor in public health on the pre-medical track. Uh, our principal at OP is Lisa Marie Kane. And then Melanie Rosado, who could not be here tonight because she is out of town, graduated top of her class at Colgan High School. She is attending Yale in the fall, attending, uh, planning to major in global affairs. And our Colgan principal is Dr. Tim Healy. Congratulations, Ikra and Melanie.
Thank you, Mrs. Argarpur. We have one more National Merit Scholarship winner who previously attended Reagan Middle School and graduated from our Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, Jasjeet Singh Sundu. Jasjeet could not be here tonight. Congratulations to our National Scholarship winners. Um, this truly is, you know, if you look at our strategic plan, our core mission is education. All the other things we're doing support our education, enhance our education, whether it's robotics and sports, but our core, core mission is education. For all of you who have succeeded as National Merit Scholars, I commend you, congratulate you, congratulate your families for getting you through this, and congratulate you on the colleges and choices and much success and happiness in the future for all of our winners and wrecking the, um, students recognized this evening. I will now turn it over to Superintendent Dr. McDade to help conclude the portion, this portion of the school board meeting. After her, Marshall will take some pictures with each of the different groups. Ms. Dr. McDade?
Thank you so much, Dr. Latif. I want to thank the entire school board for protecting this time, to recognize our outstanding students and staff members who have excelled in a variety of areas, including sports and extracurricular activities, including academics, STEM-related competition, and culinary accomplishments as well as sports. Congratulations to our award-winning robotics teams, rowing team, JROTC, and wrestler, and our National Merit Scholarship winners, and Virginia Pro Start Educator Excellence Award winner in the culinary arts. You have all represented Prince William County public schools and your individual schools well, and we are incredibly proud of each and every one of you. Congratulations.
So, um, I'll have the board step down off the dais. We'll start with pictures with the JROTC team first, followed by the Forest Park Crew Team, then Mr. Evans, and then finally our National Merit Scholarship winners. Uh, JROTC first.
You should wait to a point five. Oh, wait. Yours doesn't have it.
Does yours have?
Yeah, mine has it. I should get mine. See? Have to go that way.
So how are we gonna do this? Like this?
And then throw up the fours.
We're gonna throw up the fours. I mean, just serious.
Oh, I mean, we should. Yeah, we are number four, too.
And they blur it out in the picture. I should say, I follow to Dr. Latif. I'm like, I follow you on Twitter. Yeah, I said, how come you didn't like my, uh, I replied to his tweet one time, he didn't like my comment. Such a shame.
Yeah.
We should get a UVA National Merit Scholarship.
Yeah. You're not gonna UVA scrub.
Yeah.
UVA, it's not like you're going to Ivy's or anything, right?
Yeah.
If everybody could fill in to the bar slide, that way everybody could get in.
Okay.
If everybody could fill in to the bar slide, that way everybody could get in. I replied to his tweet one time. He didn't like my comment. Such a shame.
Are you going to UVA National Merit Scholarship?
Yeah. You're not going to UVA. Scrub. Yeah. UVA, it's not like you're going to Ivy's or anything, right? Yeah.
I hope we're next. Yes.
Okay. Thank you all for your patience. And I know this is just one of the most exciting parts of the school board meeting. So we're very excited to do that. Again, thank you all to the families and friends who came to join us this evening. At this point, that concludes our thriving futures. We're going to move on to the official meeting. I would like to now call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. We will start first, actually, I want to introduce our new student, and then he will lead us in the pledge. Where am I? What number is this student?
Page six.
Page six. So we're gonna move him up here a little bit. Hold on. Page... We have two students here. Okay. All right. Hold on. Just getting this. Getting my glasses. Got it. Okay. At our last school board meeting, we elected two new student representatives for the 2223 school year, along with one alternate. Tonight, we have one of the student representatives here with us, as well as our alternate student representative, and we would like to take a few moments to introduce them to you all. So let's start with our student representative, Chance Williams. Chance is a rising senior at Forest Park High School. Chance, can you please stand up? Come to the podium here? Outstanding. Okay. And then our second student representative, well-known to the board and to many of you are, is Danya Sharifi. She is unable to join us this evening, and she is out of town. Danya is a rising senior at Gainesville High School, who also served as a student representative this year, and we look forward to having her with us next year as well. Joining us this evening also is our alternate student representative, Christian Daniels. Christian is a rising senior at the Hilton High School. Come on up to the podium. And why don't you two lead us in the pledge of allegiance? If everyone can please rise, and our flag is here behind Dr. McDade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Chance and Christian. We are very excited to work with you this fall. As today is the last day of school, you are all excused, and you don't have to sit through this this evening with us. So go enjoy this summer and summer school, I hope. No. Whatever you guys are doing, enjoy. We will see you in the fall. Thank you very much. A round of applause for these two gentlemen. Okay. Now, let me get back on track here. Next, we have the... Oh. Well, as seeing there's no... I'd like to ask the board if they don't have any objection. I'd like to move the collective bargaining part of the agenda to right after citizen comment time and before the energy and sustainability update and the other presentations. So as seeing no objection, I will go ahead and move that in the agenda to right after citizen comment time. Next will be the approval of the agenda, and motions in order. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I have a second.
Any discussion? Okay. Seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Wonderful. Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. Motions in order. Ms. Jackson.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay. Next, we're going to go on to citizen comment time. Those citizens who've signed up in advance with a clerk may address the school board this evening when they are called to the podium. The citizen comment period is for regular school board meetings is limited to one hour. With the first half hour reserved for comments on agenda items only, and the second half hours, comments on agenda or other topics germane to the operations and policies of the Prince William County Schools. Citizens signed up to speak on agenda items must speak to the agenda item they have identified, or they'll be asked to step down. We have 10 speakers on agenda and 10 on non-agenda. Speakers have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium, or you will be asked to step aside. We ask that the audience, please be respectful of each speaker, refrain from any clapping, cheering, or jeering to avoid disruption of the meeting. If you do not do so, the board will recess, and I will ask the room to be cleared to restore public order. When I call your name, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. I will go ahead and now call the first five speakers up to the front, and there are chairs for you to sit in up front. The first five speakers will be John Han, Cozy Bailey, Brandy Provenzano, Emily Cherry, and Maggie Hansford. John Han is first. John Han. Okay. Cozy Bailey.
Good evening, school board members. Dr. McDade, I'm Nerven Cozy Bailey, president of the Prince William NAACP. I'm a resident of the Potomac Magisterial District. I hear regarding Agenda Item 20.01, Collective Bargaining. And on behalf of the Prince William NAACP branch, excuse me, I encourage you to adopt the resolution provided for collective bargaining by school board employees. The NAACP has a longstanding and rich history of working with labor unions to promote fair wages, good benefits, workplace protections, and equal opportunities, and has passed numerous resolutions and action items in support of the right and freedom to unionize and collectively bargain for all American workers. Over 60 years ago, in 1961, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. addressed the AFL-CIO Fourth Constitutional Convention in Bow Harbor, Florida. He spoke of the unity of purpose between the labor movement and the movement for civil rights. He said, "Our needs are identical with labor's needs." Decent wages, fair working conditions, livable housing, old age security, health and welfare measures, conditions in which families can grow, have education for their children, and respect in the community. In summary, Dr. King asserted that the right to collective bargaining is a civil right. And here we are, 60 years later, and we, the NAACP, still assert that collective bargaining is a civil right. The NAACP reiterates its strong support for all workers to include the Prince William County School System employees to collectively bargain for their wages, benefits, working conditions, and other rights. And we urge you to approve the proposed resolution, thereby indicating your support for this civil right. Thank you very much.
Next, we'll have Brandy Provenzano.
Good evening, school board members. Dr. McDade, my name is Brandy Provenzano, and my address is on file. I would like to take a moment and recognize the elected officials and candidates here tonight in support of collective bargaining rights for Prince William County School employees. Please stand up and be recognized. Thank you again for your support. We appreciate all of you. Thank you, school board members, and Dr. McDade for your support as well. As you know, a lot can change in a very short amount of time. Think about where you were a year ago today. You certainly were not sitting in this room without a mask on, less than six feet away from someone next to you. A year ago, I was wondering if my eighth grader was going to transition into high school. He is now a sophomore at Battlefield. A year ago, my fifth grader was a gravely sea dog. He is now a proud Reagan Mustang. A year ago, my oldest son could not drive. He would argue that I couldn't drive then, and I still can't drive now. A year ago, I did not know the 143 amazing students that I would have the honor of teaching this year. I would not have made the meaningful connections and relationships with my students and their families. A lot can change in a year. A lot can change in less than a year. A lot can change in a very short amount of time. There is urgency in passing, not just collective bargaining, but a resolution, because one thing we have all learned during this pandemic is that we don't have the luxury of time. The time is now. I am here as a 20-year board-certified veteran teacher of over 2,900 Prince William County School students to respectfully ask the division to work with us, your employees, to write and pass a meaningful resolution for all Prince William County School employees, including classified, certified, and administrators. As Dr. Latif stated earlier, the core of everything we do is the education of our students. We cannot educate our students without educators. Finally, we would like to take a moment and recognize the amazing educators and librarians out there and let them know that we stand with them, and we are proud to be a part of this school division. Thank you.
Emily Cherry.
Good evening, Dr. McDade and members of the board. My name's Emily Cherry, and my address is on file. I'm here again tonight to ask the board to vote yes to grant collective bargaining rights to all Prince William County School employees. I had a hard time planning what to say tonight because over the course of the school year, so many educators and community members have spoken and written so eloquently, so many times, about why educators need and deserve collective bargaining rights. I don't know if you've noticed, but we educators can be a stubborn bunch. That's why so many of us keep showing up to all of these meetings, and that's why so many of us are here tonight. We just refuse to give up. I see teachers and educators every day that don't give up on our students, cafeteria workers that distributed hundreds of thousands of meals to our students during the pandemic, bus drivers that continue to run extra routes every single day, custodial staff members that have deep cleaned our buildings over and over again, teachers that reteach difficult standards again and again until students achieve mastery, and that love our kids through their hardest days. I'm so incredibly grateful for the PWCS educators that have never given up on my own children. One of my kids has a learning disability and struggled for years to learn how to read. But his teachers never gave up on him. They always saw his potential, and they took the time to get to know him and love him. And now, as he heads to middle school this year, he's reading almost three years above grade level. I'll never be able to put into words how very, very thankful that I am for the teachers that never gave up on my baby boy. Educators just don't give up. And so here we are. We're here again on the last day of the school year. In the middle of the hardest year in education that most of us can remember, we came together. We organized. We collected thousands of signatures in only two months in favor of collective bargaining. We made history together. So now, tonight, I'm asking you, don't give up on us. We are a resilient bunch, but we need your help. We need fully-staffed schools. We need to feel respected. We need to be listened to. We need collective bargaining. Thank you.
Maggie Hansford.
Good evening. My name is Maggie Hansford, and my address is on file with the clerk. I am here to speak in favor of collective bargaining. It's been over 44 years in the making, but the bill was passed in Virginia over 700 days. And the law went into effect over 400 days ago. Educators will witness a historic vote tonight regarding our school employees having the right to collectively bargain. How did we get here? We got here today because our educators have led. Our educators have done the work. Our educators have called today's vote. It wasn't easy. It took patience, time, and a lot of hard work. It took our educators working together to build a collective voice to reach all employees throughout our division. It took relationship building, and that starts with trust. Educators understand the severity of our staffing shortage. Educators also understand the impact on our students with a staffing shortage. Educators trust each other, and we know the national norm is what is owed and deserved. Collective bargaining is a norm in our country. The time to act is now. We ask when you vote tonight, you vote with your conscience. A yes vote tonight must be made with good intent to include labor, that's us, at the table to move a resolution this calendar year. We must ensure a meaningful resolution is passed because we know we can't put students first if we continue to struggle to retain and recruit for our classrooms. I thank each board member tonight for you voting your conscience and voting in the best interests of our students and staff. Last but not least, I want to thank our educators. I want to thank our educators for believing in themselves. I want to thank our educators for doing all this hard work. I want to thank our educators for having no days off. I want to thank our educators for never quitting. I want to thank our educators for always being givers and trying to give more than they receive. I want to thank our educators for trying to do more right than wrong. I want to thank our educators for bringing their all, all the time. Educators are really our county's real MVP. I want to acknowledge an educator in the room tonight. You've seen her several times. She comes in support of collective bargaining for her peers. She is knitting, crocheting scarves for each one of her students. Her time, her resources. That's what we do. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Stephanie Evers, Leslie Tom, Ma'keia Little, Tammy Fick, and Jennifer Carrefoy. Stephanie Evers.
Good evening, members of the school board, Dr. Latif, Dr. McDade. My name is Stephanie Evers, and my address is on file. I'm here tonight to ask for you to vote yes on collective bargaining. This has been a long haul. I quit two lucrative adjunct professor positions to work on this effort. Who needs four jobs, anyway? I'm exhausted, but tonight, I'm hopeful and appreciative. I appreciate all of you listening to us, reading our emails, and being open to the idea that employees could have meaningful input into our organization. I've gotten to know a few of you a little bit better, and I appreciate that as well. Gosh, I appreciate Maggie Hansford for her leadership in PWEA and working so hard for all employees, not only PWEA membership. She is positive and a motivating force. I mean, we collected 5,000 signatures in two months. You can't do that kind of work for somebody who's a jerk, right? I appreciate my core group in our collective bargaining campaign, all of the site-location leaders and representatives. Mostly, I'm appreciative of the relationships that I've made and the people that I've met throughout this process. When I first started working towards collective bargaining, it was for people like myself, veteran teachers who missed steps, met at the flagpole and had our contract extended by 30 minutes every day, lost our planning time or our lunch, worked so hard to transition to virtual during the pandemic. But it goes beyond just my group. We really do have amazing people here in Prince William County Schools. I met a teaching assistant who told me she's basically working for her family's healthcare, taking home only $120 per pay period. She wishes she could finish her education to become a special ed teacher, but she just can't afford it. She said when she had to cover a class because a teacher was out and there were no substitutes available, she made less for work that day than a substitute would. I met a bus driver who fed me German potato salad and told me how bus drivers are making two or three extra runs because we're so short-staffed. And then they're asked to not work anymore overtime, only to be told the next day to make another extra run. Everyone has worked so hard to keep us going, to keep us a world-class organization when we're down 1,000 employees. And what we want is hope. What we want is a voice. We want to know that we matter. We want to work together to truly make this a great school division that people will want to apply to and stay. Thank you, and please vote yes on collective bargaining. The time is now.
Leslie Tom.
Good evening. My name's Leslie Tom. I'm a Coles District voter and a resident. My address is on file. I would like to thank you for listening to your staff and educators and being willing to work with them. I want to address you tonight, not only as a teacher, but as a longtime volunteer for Prince William County Schools, a parent, but also as a voter, as one of your constituents. I'm going to ask you to vote yes for collective bargaining and come up with a resolution. The reason for this is I have to speak to my... The reason for this is I have to speak to my experience. I am a brand-new teacher. I started during the pandemic. And what inspired me to go back to pursuing a college degree and becoming a teacher was by volunteering in my students' own elementary school. Every single day, I saw the commitment that all the teachers, all the staff, from our school nurse to our counselors, to even women in the cafeteria, loving our children and being dedicated to them. And that inspired me to go back into the field of teaching. So as you know, today was the last day of school. I was cleaning up my classroom. This is my second year as a teacher. I'm exhausted. All I wanted to do was go home, see my kids, see my dog, take a nap. But instead, I'm here imploring you to please vote yes on collective bargaining. I love the fact that the school board took the time to honor all of our students and our staff who worked so hard, especially robotics. I love robotics. Love them so much. I hype them all the time. That's how I started volunteering, is just that focus in robotics and supporting even our students as they went on to world championship competitions. So, I'm tired. I want to go home, but I'm here tonight with my colleagues. This year, I would like to make sure that you guys are going to vote yes on collective bargaining. I understand the board's desire to take their time and write in a resolution. I love that you all took the time to listen to every single one of us, to do your own research on collective bargaining. But right now, we don't have a lot of time. As a special education teacher, I don't often get a planning. I don't often have time to have lunch. So I'm asking you to honor our voices so that way we can respect that time and we can use that time to focus on our students. We have been asked to pivot for the last two years in everything that we do and you have seen us come through for our students time and time again. So what we're asking for you tonight is to come through for us, all of our educators, all of our staff from Prince William County Schools, so that way we can back, get back to doing what we do best and that's focusing on our students because all of our decisions, our core, is to focus on that education and to make sure our students are progressing. Thank you.
Ma'keia Little.
Good evening. My name is Ma'keia Little. My address is on file. And as a parent, I have been showing up at school board meetings since 2019 to advocate for parents, students, and educators. As a parent, this podium created my seat at the table. Not only have I had the liberty to speak freely without any concern of potential retaliation for doing so, the very first time I spoke on March 20th, 2019, I literally had an immediate meeting with Superintendent Walts just out in the hall at the conclusion of my comments. In the three minutes Dr. Latif was graciously enough to allow me to speak, I had earned a seat at the table. My sister, on the other hand, a 20-year veteran educator of Prince William County Public Schools who has sacrificed her limited financial resources, health, and time with her own children to help educate the rest of our county's children still, has no voice, sense of safety, or seat at the table to advocate on her own behalf. Ever since we were little girls, I have always been the outspoken one, surprise. The one who would advocate for our parents to read our written proposals for new bicycles or an increase in allowance or to drop everything and take us shopping for supplies we needed for school. If you ask my father, he can tell you the story about how I went so far as to start his 1989 944 Porsche at the tender age of 11, just to ensure our voices were heard. Well, today, I'm here to speak in support of all of my sisters and brothers who serve as educators in Prince William County. I may not have a Porsche engine to rev at this time, but my voice, along with the voice of my friend, ideological sister, and fellow education equity advocate-the-delegate Elizabeth Guzman, who has graciously allowed me to also speak on her behalf this evening, are just as powerful. Our educators have done the work. They have followed the rules. They met the Commonwealth's requirements and they have served all families of our community at significant risk to their own, all without competitive compensation. All our teachers want is the dignity of a voice, a seat at the table to co-create an inclusive, considerate, working environment that benefits all our families, theirs included. Thank you.
Tammy Fick.
Good evening, school board and Dr. McDade. My name is Tammy Fick. I live and vote in the Brinsfield District and my address is on file. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you once again this evening. I promise it's the last time for this school year. But let me get to the point and we're going to keep this short and sweet tonight. Really, they can laugh. So, here we go. Lack of planning time, lack of unencumbered lunch, educators getting out of education, mandatory meetings outside of contract hours, hundreds of unfilled positions, lack of employee retention, substitute shortage, bus driver shortage, bus drivers pulling double duty, lack of livable wage, classified staff taking home pocket change after insurance is paid, overfilled classrooms, combining classes for coverage, covering classes instead of planning, inability to attract new employees, uncompensated extra duties outside of contract hours. What you've just heard is just a small list of reasons that we need collective bargaining. There are so many more reasons, but I'm only given three minutes to speak. You have trusted us enough to hire us as guides and teachers for the younger generation. We should be trusted to know what we need to have the best working conditions and the best learning environment for our students. Contrary to what so many people think about PWEA and collective bargaining, no one will be forced to join the union in order to benefit from what is negotiated. We will not be striking. This is still Virginia. And we will not be trying to bankrupt the county. I mean, we understand the laws and what is allowed. We've done our research. We simply want to be shown respect and to have a say in how we are treated and compensated, both certified and classified employees. Thank you to those of you who have been so supportive of teachers and employees all year long. Please don't stop now. Vote yes for collective bargaining.
Jennifer Carol Foy.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. McDade. I'm Jennifer Carol Foy and my address is on file. Collective bargaining has always been the bedrock of the American labor movement. In my view, it is the only alternative to state regulation of wages and prices. Those who would cripple collective bargaining or prevent organization of the unorganized do so at a decision to the cause or to the disservice to the cause of democracy. John F. Kennedy. I want to say two words to you all. Two words that have often gone unsaid in these political times. Two words to express my acknowledgement of the weekends that you sacrifice, the families you don't see, the time that you lose. Two words to express my gratitude for what I anticipate to be a positive vote for collective bargaining, thereby showing that public service addressing learning loss and placing teachers, students, and staff first is truly your North Star. Two words to express my understanding of how hard it is to do your job in this climate. And those two words I want to say to all of you are thank you. Thank you from a mom with two children in Prince William County Schools who are thriving, although there was serious learning loss from COVID. Thank you from a former and still recovering substitute teacher. Thank you from a wife, a current Prince William County High School head track coach. I want us all to take a moment to acknowledge the fact that you all are making the tough decisions. You are making the hard choices and you're doing your absolute best and I see you, I hear you, and I want to say thank you. Collective bargaining is another vote that we need and I am sure that you all will do what is in the best interest that matter, things that matter to the vision and values of the parents and the voters in this counter. So teachers, hopefully with collective bargaining, will be off the menu and thank you for supporting collective bargaining and giving them a seat at the table.
Next five will be Megan Maldonado, Jamie Maldonado-Febow, Fred Chin, Ken Nar, Damon Serone. Megan Maldonado up first.
Good evening. My name is Megan Maldonado. My address is on file. I am a temporary employee with Prince William County Schools. I am also a mother to two children in the school district, one being my son Mateo, who just finished eighth grade today on the honor roll and who has an ADA-recognized disability and is on a 504 plan. This resilient, intelligent, kind-hearted young man is the reason his father and I are here tonight. On Tuesday, May 31st, we received a call saying that a student, let's call them Student A, had turned my son into the school for threatening to shoot up the school. Naturally, we were blown away by this accusation. When getting to the school, what we learned was that a boy who we will name Student B had stood up in class and yelled out, "Mateo said he's going to shoot up the school." We were told that because of current events, the school needed to do its due diligence and interview other students while my son was forced to stay home from school, missing his favorite classes, teachers, and education time. My son also had to hear that if the school administration could not clear him, then he could be charged by the police and a second charge would lead to juvenile detention. So a child who has shown zero characteristics of a troubled student could possibly be one step away from juvenile detention by the week's end. Mateo is hardworking, an A and B student, and is well-liked by all of his teachers. The resource officer involved did not even know who my son was and commented that Mateo did not have a single note from a teacher on his file from any year. He has a large friend group and is extremely active in his community and with the local Boy Scout troop. He has two loving parents at home and a sister who adores him. We were told that it was a substitute in the classroom that day and they had stepped out, so it was my son's math teacher in the room. The teacher clearly heard in the calm classroom, Student B make his vicious remark, but never heard any such thing from my son and stated that Mateo immediately and strongly denied ever saying this. It also turns out that Student A was not even enrolled in that class, so why was that student there in the first place? Also, Student B decided to sit next to my son that day due to the substitute being present and the substitute not adhering to the seating chart. However, Student B had a history of antagonizing my son, making fun of his size, which is a byproduct of his medication for his disability, and has been purposely seated away from my son for the year. Police showed up to my home Wednesday morning to search for weapons, which we own zero, by the way. We knew we could opt out of the search, but told my son, "When you are innocent, there is nothing to hide." After the search, it was determined by the administration and the resource officer that my son did not say what Student B had declared. Student B did it to take his bullying of a peer with a disability to another level, a level that could have gotten my son arrested or far worse. Mateo was allowed back at school on Thursday and was told this day missed would be an excused absence. That was it. Case closed according to the school, but the damage that this malicious lie that Student B told had been done to my son and our family. For my son's safety, we insisted that he was removed from the class with Student B. My son loved his teacher in that class beside, despite the continued abuse he received from Student B throughout the year. So now he has missed two weeks of class and instead sat with a counselor alone. There is more to discuss regarding this incident that my husband Jamie will also speak about.
Jamie Maldonado-Febow.
Hello, my name is Jamie Maldonado. I'm resident of Aquan District. I am a retired US Army veteran, 26 years, currently a federal employee with the Department of Homeland Security. To continue where my spouse left off, my son was now, excuse me, sorry. For my son... Excuse me. My son is now included in a police report in Prince William County. He needs to, he will need to disclose this information should he wish to follow in his father's footsteps. He has had faced down multiple rumors and pushed multiple rumors at the school and deal with, asking, people asking him about his incident over and over again. What happened to Student B? Nothing. Why is there, has there not been an investigation since the student? Surely, a student who thinks it's funny to joke about shooting up a school and should be investigated as my son was. Why is there no request for making false claims like the, like outside of the school? Administration may argue that that would deter people from asking, from making a report. But I would say that if you have reasonable belief, then there shouldn't be no fear for being asked, questions being asked. At the very least, all parties involved should have been put in administrative leave instead of being allowed to, allowed in the school to interact with the potential witness while the accused is sitting at home. Prince William County just implemented another tip, implemented tip line for people to call for safety concerns. What presence do we set to ensure students do not call this tip line to play horrific pranks as the, as the case of my son? The teacher present in the room heard Student B say these things and pulled my son and Student B into the hallway to see what happened. Student B even apologized to my son and the teacher and the teacher did not report it because she knew my, that my son did not say anything of the sort. Why would, did the school administration not ask the non-biased adult that was present in the room at this time? This is the same adult that we are asking to keep our children safe and from a real threat. And we are asking them about, and we're not asking them about situations that arise in front of them. Where is the training for substitutes in classroom management? Why did the substitute not know how to handle a child in the classroom that was not on the roster or how to implement a seating arrangement, a seating chart that is there for more than just the reason of just having kids sit where their teacher wants them to sit? These are not rhetorical questions, but rather questions that our board needs to strongly consider and provide answers, answers that will bring a positive change to our school district. The board and the school administration needs to do a better job of keeping our children safe, both from real threats and from students who would use false reporting to try to ruin a child's future. Thank you.
Fred Chin. Fred Chin. Ken Nar.
Ken Nar, Gainesville District. Over the last several months, I've praised Dr. McDade's new strategic plan and her efforts to identify and secure short-term funding for these goals and objectives. We have great kids who can and will excel given the opportunity when instruction is presented in a culturally anchored manner by teachers in adequate numbers and who are appropriately compensated by their, for their expertise in teaching the most diverse student body in the Commonwealth. The third piece of this equation is the learning environment. Our students need facilities, technologies, environmental conditions conducive to positive learning on a more consistent and equitable way. We have heard young students comment on unsafe restrooms, dark parking lots, and inadequate technologies. We've heard students talk about excessive heat and cooling in certain schools. We can and need to do better. Prince William County has unsuccessfully tried to residentially build its way out of its financial and infrastructure shortfalls for the past 30 years. The equation must change. The school's 10-year capital improvement plan outpaces the county's five-year plan, but still falls short of identifying our capital improvement requirements in total. If we truly aspire to be the greenest school district in the nation, an admirable goal and a great example for our children, the equation must change. The new pending comprehensive plan allows you to accurately predict where growth will occur. We know what schools need to be built, rebuilt, and renovated to meet our current and future educational facility needs. Please calculate the total need and work with the board accounting supervisors to build and develop a local economy that generates the tax revenue necessary to fulfill our capital improvement requirements. Tax globally, spend locally. We are considering million-dollar solutions for billion-dollar problems. The equation must change. Our school budget needs approximately $150 million more per year to fulfill its capital improvements. The equation must change. The county's commercial tax base must be increased over the industry planning target of 35% in order for our teachers to be paid appropriately and for us to provide a world-class educational facilities and technologies to all of our children equitably. Thank you.
Damon Serone.
Good evening. My name is Damon Serone. My address is on file. I am in my first year of retirement as a 32-year educator and a 30-year educator in Prince William County Public Schools. Dr. McDade, I want to welcome you to Prince William County, a year into your term. Congratulations on a successful first year. I have read your strategic plan and follow it as I do my ROP duties and you're off to a fantastic start. Thank you very much. I was doing, last night I was doing what most retirement people do. I was sitting with my wife on the deck because it's Saturday every day of the week. And she informed me that we, we live in the 10th most diverse county in the country. Prince William County Public Schools owes every one of those children, by those I mean all of them, not those, because I understand that terminology, a world-class education that they provide. One of the easiest ways to start to provide it is to ensure that school libraries have books that are inclusive, teach acceptance, and represent the entire Prince William County community, no matter race, ethnicity, or sexual orientation. A librarian has a thankless job. They see every child in the building. It is their job, number one, at the elementary level, which I am most knowledgeable of, to instill a love of learning and reading in every child. Because if you can read, you can do anything. They are responsible to make sure that the collection in that library represents every child because research tells us that when children can read books and see themselves in those books and their families in their books, they learn better. This county is lucky to have librarians like the librarian at Marshall Elementary School and my dear friend, Tanya Parrott, the Knoxville School Librarian, for their compassion to their students, to this board, and to Prince William County Public Schools. Thank you very much.
The next five, Richard Jesse, Carol Fox, Amy McCarthy, Aubrey Veracon, and Chris Funderberg.
My name is Richard Jesse. My address is on file. Forgive me, I just had cataract surgery, so I'm getting used to my $10 glasses here to read. I just want to, first of all, I want to say that I hope this board passes collective bargaining. There is no reason why it should not pass it, and I hope that the votes are there tonight for that. The other thing I wanted to say tonight was that over the years I have come up and suggested a lot of things, and I understand that this summer, the school system and some of the board members are going to get together and look at policy. I hope that when you look at the policy, you make sure that it's publicized and the citizen can see it. And when you come back in the fall, that you do like you normally do, have a reading of the policy, make sure that citizens can comment on the changes and then vote on it at the following meeting. Some of the things that I have talked about was boundaries, citizen times, changes, and a lot of those things I think that we should cover. One thing that I want to encourage to look at is schools that have all the names on it. I do think we should have one day a year where the school recognizes and talk about why the school is named that way. I remember when my wife looked at Elizabeth Von and asked why and who that person was. Most people did not know. So she had a day, she brought in the family of Mrs. Elizabeth Von, who had passed away, of course, and made sure that the school and the kids knew why the school's name is that. I think it's important. I also hope that we looked at doing boundaries in a different manner, doing it earlier than we do now, and also revised the ramping of it. I also mentioned the citizen, student reps. I don't know exactly what the procedures are, but I would think, would hope that perhaps like some schools do, have a election by the student body to determine who they want to be their student reps. I'd like to wish you guys a good summer and hope that we see you back here next year and looking forward to seeing what the changes are. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol Fox. Good evening, school board. I'm Carol Fox. My address is on file. This evening I come before you to ask you to say no to collective bargaining. The teachers already have ample opportunity to sit down with the school board and discuss their wages, their benefits, and their needs, and I believe they've aptly stated them tonight. You represent the parents. We are the parents. We are voting for you, and you are the parents. You are the ones who represent us. You are our voice at the table. Please say no to collective bargaining. The second thing I want to comment on is the incident at Marshall Elementary School. Do you know what grooming is? It is a process where the perpetrator, the teacher or the librarian, gradually gains the trust of the victim, children at school, to accept a sexual idea as the norm. How does this happen? Well, you have a target, children at school. You secure the access, use the morning announcements, gain the trust. You're the teacher or the librarian. Control the relationship. All mislisten carefully and respectfully in the morning. This can be done in person or it can be done via the Internet. I also want to draw your attention to Section 2422 of the Federal Code. This is referred to as the Federal Enticement Statute. Here, the focus of the law is on the effect of what is done to the minor, not on any outright intention of sexual activity that has to be present. I'm sure you know about that incident that took place, where the librarian read the book called The Prince in the Night to all 600 students without the express consent from any of the parents. The book normalizes marriage between two males. This is the beginning of grooming. A book read to the group, next another book, something else happens, keeps on going. This is all grooming with the intended purpose of normalizing various sexual ideas. This also puts a wedge between the parent and the child, between the parent, the teacher, the school, and the school board. What is the purpose of this reading? None was given. Why? I don't know. Well, as the Chinese say, a trip of a thousand miles starts with the first step. Is this the first step of being defiant towards a traditional family? I see it as that, and I see it as grooming. Your proclamation of the Pride Month is one thing. I applaud you for that. All of our teachers, librarians, custodians, all our staff needs to know that we recommend, we love them and we appreciate them, and we appreciate the time and effort they put into our students. But deliberately allowing grooming and indoctrination in Prince William County Schools is very different. You are responsible for what the staff can or cannot teach. Do your job. Stop grooming and/or the indoctrination by the staff in Prince William County Schools. Thank you.
Amy McCarthy.
Now, somebody back here just said something very disrespectful to me, Mr. La...
I've made it clear that no one is supposed to speak, and they're supposed to show respect to the speaker regardless of what the speaker is saying. I've asked this numerous times over the course of this year. We will start a new school board meeting next year, and I really hope we can model for our students some respectable, good behavior. Because if we can't do it, folks, I'm not sure what we're doing here. Amy McCarthy.
Dr. McDade and school board members, my name is Amy McCarthy and my address is on file, and I am back. Like all of us, I stand before you feeling exhausted and accomplished after a very hard year. While this year had its many challenged, challenges, I feel so encouraged that things are getting back to normal. Last week, we had our first in-person fifth grade promotion after two years. And today, like so many years before, we lined the halls and we sang our school song to our fifth graders as they got on their buses for the last time as Old Bridge Dolphins. It was wonderful. I am also so excited to be teaching music enrichment this summer. I commend PWCS for offering this to our students, and I hope it becomes an annual program within the arts. My husband also finished a tough year of teaching high school. He, more than I noticed, student learning loss, and because of that, he is also teaching summer school. Like many of my colleagues, contrary to popular belief, we do not have our summers off. We are dedicated to our students' learning and success. This is who we are. We are the teachers that learned virtual platforms. We kept our screens on. We stayed after hours to listen to a child that had something to say or their dog to show us. We are the teachers that were back in the buildings scared because we were not yet vaccinated. We are the teachers that have stayed in the county through pay freezes while others have left. We are the teachers that taught hybrid, concurrent, and in-person at the same time. We are the teachers that are criticized by community members, yet we show up for their children every day. We are the teachers that believe in public school education and in Prince William County Schools. We are the ones that work with your students every day, and in coalition with their parents, we are their greatest advocates. We know what they need to succeed in the classroom. We are the only group, though, that is not represented. Parents have a seat through their elected board. Students have a seat through their student rep. Admin has a seat through the superintendent. But teachers, we don't have a voice. As John F. Kennedy said, "Labor unions are not narrow, self-seeking groups. They have brought justice and democracy to the shop floor." Please bring democracy and justice to the shop floor. Get all certified and classified staff a seat at the table. Treat us as the educated, dedicated professionals we are. Vote yes for collective bargaining. Thank you.
Aubrey Veracon.
Good evening. My name is Aubrey Veracon, and I teach band and orchestra at Porter Traditional School. And I am super excited because I'm going to have a kindergartner at the Knoxville School this fall, and I'm looking forward to hearing all of the great books that she's going to be reading. Today was the last day of the school year. This year definitely had its challenges, but there are many reasons for me to be thankful as well. I am thankful for all of those who have taken the time to help make this school year successful for our students. Without plenty, without plenty of time and support from my colleagues, our students would be unable to thrive. It is important to remember that time is a non-renewable resource. We are only given so much, and once we use it, we cannot get it back. Time has value. Although I am unable to thank everyone who provided the gift of their time in three minutes, I would like to recognize as many individuals as I can who provided our students with the support they needed this school year through their gift of time. I'm thankful for Ms. Kelsey, who is an amazing person and willing to find the answer to my questions I have. She helped me with all my evening concerts by setting up and tearing down, running a CD player and ensuring my students were on their best behavior. Thank you for giving our students the gift of your time. I am thankful for Mr. Fay and Ms. Banks, who also helped with setting up and tearing down, particularly in the percussion section. They also always have innovative ways to support our students in the classroom. Thank you for giving our students the gift of your time. I am thankful for Mr. Lockamy, Ms. Wenzel, along with Mr. Fay and Ms. Banks, who were willing to take their own time to learn music, to play along with my students, to help support their performances. Thank you for giving our students the gift of your time. I am thankful for Ms. Nunez, who just showed up at my concert asking how she could help me. Thank you for giving our students the gift of your time. I am thankful for our custodians, Ms. Beverly, Mr. Ivan, Mr. Love, and Mr. Lee, who take time from their regular duties to get the cafeteria ready for all the different events that we have at our school. Thank you for giving our students the gift of your time. I am thankful for Ms. Branstall, who teaches at other schools in Prince William County, who helped ensure our students were able to participate in solo ensemble. It was the same night as another school event I needed to be at. Thank you for giving our students the gift of your time. I'm thankful for the over 5,000 PWCS teachers and staff who sign their collective bargaining authorization card. Thank you for recognizing that your time has value. It does not have to be a gift, and you deserve to be recognized. Last but not least, I am thankful for you voting tonight. Educators are running out of the gift of time. I hope you vote yes and support PWCS employees and collective bargaining, and we can develop a meaningful resolution within a similar timeframe as other county employees. Thanks.
Mr. Chris Funderberg.
Hello, my name is Chris Funderberg and my address is on file. I want you to fully understand what it is you're promoting with the transgender policy as is. After hearing this, if you continue with the transgender policy as is, then you are either psychotic or truly evil. This is a quote from a now-famous Twitter user, Tulip R., a detransitioned adult male. "I have no sensation in my crotch region at all. You could stab me with a knife and I wouldn't know. No one told me that the base area of your penis is left. It can't be removed, meaning you're left with a literal stump inside that twitches. My sex drive died about six months on hormone replacement therapy, and at the time, I was glad to be rid of it. But now, 10 years later, I'm realizing what I'm missing out on and what I won't get back because even if I had a sex drive, my neovagina is so narrow and small, I won't be able to. And when I do use a small dilator, I have random pockets of sensation that only seem to pick up pain. Then there's the dreams. I dream often that I have both sets of genitals. In the dream, I'm distressed I have both. Why both, I think? I tell myself to wake up because I know it's just a dream, and I awaken into a living nightmare. In those moments of amnesia as I would wake, I reach down to my crotch area expecting something that was there for three decades, and it's not. My heart skips a beat every single time. Then there's the act of going to the toilet. It takes me about 10 minutes to empty my bladder. It's extremely slow and painful, leaving me soaked. So after cleaning myself up, I will find moments later that my underwear is wet, no matter how much I wiped. It slowly drips out for the best part of an hour. The realization that this is permanent is catching up with me. During transition, I was obsessive and deeply unwell. I cannot believe they were allowed to do this to me, even after all the red flags. They just nodded along and didn't tell me the realities, what life would be like. And finally, there's the dilation, which is like some sort of demonic ceremony where you impale yourself for 20 agonizing minutes to remind you of your own stupidity. This isn't even the half of it, and this isn't regret. This is grief and anger. The ones that will be most hurt are the gay and lesbian kids. In the next few years, the detrans movement will be picking up steam, and the truth about what has happened under your watch will be fully realized. You won't be able to feign ignorance, and what you have promoted won't be forgotten. I've made sure of that. Please stop it now and save the children or live with the consequences of these decisions. Thank you."
Okay, that concludes Citizen Comment time. We will move on next to, we'll go on to the motion for collective bargaining. A motion is, and let me get back to the gen item here. A motion is in order. Ms. Jesse? Can you turn on your microphone?
I'm sorry, I am. Mr. Chairman, I recommend that Prince William County School Board vote on whether to adopt a resolution providing for collective bargaining by Prince William County, bargaining by school board employees.
Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Ms. Williams seconds. Discussion. Who would like to start? Any discussion? Or do you want to vote? Who wants, who goes, Ms. Jesse?
I'm surprised that there's reluctance to talk about this, but first of all, I want to say to Wade Anderson, who provided the training for me yesterday, I think it was, yesterday afternoon. It was two hours. I hope that all board members attended that training. It was comprehensive. If you think you knew everything you needed to know about collective bargaining, you do not. And so I would like to thank you for that training yesterday.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse.
Thank you. This is, Kenny Bodie and I decided to go on a gratitude tour, which is what we call a gratitude tour. We were planning it earlier in the year, but Kenny fell and messed up his knees, and we just kept postponing it. But we, I want, we still did the tour. And I went to 11 schools. We passed out 68 dozen doughnuts, a total of about 800 doughnuts to teachers. And what I saw didn't surprise me because I've been in the field. I'm probably the only one on this board who has actually been in the field with teachers on a regular... I'm probably the only one on this board who has actually been in the field with teachers on a regular basis. And I know who they are, and I know how hard they work. But these teachers were applauding me for bringing a doughnut. And I said, "Are you kidding me? I'm just bringing you a doughnut." And their gratitude just overwhelmed me. You guys know that I give this cup when I was a principal. Every Friday, I gave cups. And I want to announce that tonight, I'm giving two cups. One to Dr. McDade and one to Al Shiroki. But this cup was just a small gesture to say, "I appreciate you." And when you're... One of the things that I think that surprised me is that they're actually watching school board meetings. So I thought, "Whoa, why are you watching school board meetings? They are very concerned." Teachers, in my estimation, are the hardest-working people I've ever met. I went to all these graduations, and most people are thinking about certain things during graduations. One, you've got 800 names, and you're on stage, and you're listening. But for me, because I've been in the field, I'm thinking, "Who did all the work? Who lined up all those teachers' kits? Who lined up the teachers? Who made everything so fluid? The caller of the names." That work was not done during the day. That work was done after school. The teachers who come to school every single day and stay after school because there's no time. You know, I've said before that I listened when I was out there because I had these great ideas, and they would say, "Mrs. Jessie, don't have another good idea." Because Mrs. Jessie had great ideas, but she had no skills. And so that meant that the teachers had to do the work. And I said, "Well, why did you come up with the ideas?" And they did. And they would come up with things that were more intense than I would ever think of. I also have the advantage, this empathy piece, of being in the field. When you're out in the field... I grew up in the field. And I grew up in a field where nobody cared what happened, and I didn't even know that I could ask for anything. I worked from 8:00 in the morning until 5:00 at night in those fields because we were very poor. And I'm not asking for poverty... You'd feel sorry for me for my poverty because it made me who I am. I also had the experience of driving to Fredericksburg to pick up a teacher because we were going to Liberty College. And if you've driven your kids in the car, they'll say, "Is it... Are we there yet?" And I thought, "Are we there yet?" We were driving an hour to get there, and there was not any traffic. So when I picked up this teacher, I said, "How... What time do you get up in the morning?" She says, "7:00," or maybe earlier. So why do no one want... I looked at the time change and calendar change and school bell changes because many of our teachers live in Fredericksburg. And so for me, it's a no-brainer that teachers deserve and should have collective bargaining. And for all of you who feel that... I heard someone say that maybe they don't read and they don't know what's going on. I think that when you have 5,000 people say to you, "We don't feel we have a seat at the table," you have to listen to that. But there's another 5,000 that have not said one way or the other what they want because they really do feel that retaliation is going to happen. And it's not something that happens on a grand scale. It's just a subtle thing. You want to be a principal, but you don't quite get the recommendation because you look like you're a person that doesn't want to work because you believe in collective bargaining. And finally, I'm not sure why people don't understand why teachers are not coming to their principals saying, "I'm interested in collective bargaining." No one's going to do that. They don't do that. So for me, I would like to say yes to collective bargaining. And I would ask my colleagues to realize that you have a superintendent that can handle anything. I actually say, "She walks on water." But after going through that training, I understand why there are some concerns because there's a lot of work that's going to have to be done. But she will listen, and she will listen to those people who did not vote for collective bargaining. But at the same time, I think there's a group of people, 5,000 people, who didn't vote, not because they didn't want to, because they feel retaliation. And there are people who really don't want collective bargaining. So with that, I will close my comments by saying, let's all respond to our teachers, many of which we've lost, principals that we've lost this year, and support collective bargaining. Thank you.
Who's next? Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Jessie, for the time. This should come as no surprise. I have long supported collective bargaining. My vote, again, is no surprise tonight. The goal today is we, as a board, need to go forward in good faith and prepare for what collective bargaining will look like for the future. I believe it is critical to have a deeper understanding and teacher viewpoint on student-centered issues such as class size, policies for paraeducators, school health and safety, and ensuring teachers have input into their professional learning. All these topics better support a thriving future for our students, which is what we are ultimately hoping to achieve. I spent last week in the schools throughout the Potomac District. Several of my principals have highlighted the current number of vacancies at their building going into the next school year. Although a simple solution would be, well, go online and interview someone, the reality is, they're not on the job portal. There are no applicants on the job portal. Before the pandemic, teacher shortages were already an issue, and now the shortages have only been exacerbated in both our Commonwealth and our nation. No state is immune to the growing number of vacancies as many veteran teachers seek an early retirement or the younger teachers flee the field. A poignant story that I had when I was visiting one of my schools was the principal had found out only a day before that one of the new teachers, first-year teacher, she thought was coming back, had decided to move back home after one year to Pennsylvania, not because she had a job lined up in Pennsylvania, but because of the stresses and the demands of what our teachers are dealing with. According to a March 2021 EdWeek survey, 54% of those interviewed indicated that they were somewhat or very likely to leave teaching in the next two years. A February 2021 survey conducted by RAND's American Teacher Panel found that one in four teachers said they were planning to leave their jobs because of job-related stresses. Although collective bargaining is not the silver bullet to this matter, giving a teacher a stronger voice in decision-making is not only best for teacher morale, but best for our county because they are the practitioners and the ones directly impacted by our district policies. We need collective bargaining to support our ongoing recruitment and retention of our most valuable workforce so that they can continue supporting a thriving future for their students. Before the pandemic, I did research on the concept of teacher efficacy when I was pursuing my master's degree at the University of Virginia. For those unaware of the concept, teacher efficacy is defined as a teacher's belief in their ability to effectively handle tasks, obligations, and challenges related to their professional activity as it plays a pivotal role in influencing student achievement and well-being in the working environment. According to a 2021 report on teacher efficacy published by the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, one of two suggestions for improving efficacy is to establish procedures through which teachers can gain regular and specific feedback on their actions and how they affect their students. How can we expect this if teachers don't have a stronger say in the professional development that we are requiring them to have? If we want to improve teacher efficacy, keep it sustainable, and better for the future, they need a say in their professional development. Some have said collective bargaining will enable the teachers to shut down the school system. False. Virginia, our Commonwealth, does not allow strikes. It is illegal. For that matter, the teacher shortage is so staggering right now that teachers all across our Commonwealth all along could have walked out and shut down our school systems. Guess what? They didn't. Others cite Chicago Public Schools as an extreme example of what collective bargaining does to public education. Unfortunately for them, a key difference there is that Illinois permits strikes, while Virginia does not. Collective bargaining does not allow teachers to control the system. Collective bargaining gives them a stronger voice in this collaborative process. Further, if we want to cite disparate examples of union strikes, let us talk about some of the high-performing districts that support collective bargaining. According to a 2021 EdWeek report, which synthesized 39 indicators, including school finance, academic achievement, socioeconomic factors, found that the top five-ranked states in education were all states with what? Guess what? A longstanding history of collective bargaining. Similarly, U.S. News and World Report looked at how well states are educating their students in preschool, K-12, and higher ed. Found that nine out of the top 10 states permitted some form of collective bargaining for their teachers. So let us dispel this myth right now that collective bargaining is automatically going to impact our students' overall academic achievement negatively. I would also like to highlight the fact that this is not all some blue states supports collective bargaining and red states do not type of issue. Let's dispel this myth. In 2020, the state of Montana voted for President Trump 57%. Guess what? They have collective bargaining. In 2020, the state of Idaho, 64% for President Trump. Guess what? They have collective bargaining. In 2020, the states of North Dakota, South Dakota, voted respectfully 65% and 62% for President Trump. Guess what? Both states have collective bargaining. In 2020, the state of Indiana voted 57% for President Trump. Indiana permits collective bargaining. In 2020, the state of Nebraska voted 58% for President Trump. Again, Nebraska has collective bargaining. There are more, but I think the point is made. Collective bargaining has not been solely confined to blue states, but many red states provide their educators with this opportunity to collectively bargain. Gallup published a survey in 2021, which reflects the bipartisan support for labor unions. 2021 Gallup concluded that 68% of those surveyed support labor unions, the highest since 1965. Although one might assume that Republicans overwhelmingly oppose this, the survey found actually 47% support labor unions. Some analysts attribute this to increased Republican support that President Trump made and appealed to blue-collar workers, and he did. For those who claim that board members are simply following marching orders from our local education association, we have short memories. But it was only over a year ago when members of this local association were blasting me for wanting to override Dr. Waltz and his return-to-learn policy. The communication was on social media, sent to my inbox, and even a suggestion was made for them to pick it in front of my house and other colleagues' houses. In summary, we are not always in alignment, and my ongoing pursuit to bring students back into our schools repeatedly met opposition. I support the educators' association when they're right, and I will oppose them when I disagree. As a board member, I immediately worked and successfully overturned the arbitrary teacher contract extension in 2016. In 2017 and '18, I proposed backpaying previously-frozen teacher steps in the salary scale which occurred during the recession. This board has dramatically improved teacher pay, as evidenced by our most recent 7% pay increase. My vote today is a vote for the future of our county and the fundamental right for teachers to have a seat at the table from this point forward. Moving forward, along with adopting collective bargaining, our school system, I believe, needs to expand opportunities to become more involved in our system. Currently, we have several standing committees. Yet, as one of the largest school systems in the United States, I believe we can afford more opportunities for our parents and families. After researching other large systems in Virginia and the U.S., I would like to increase the current parent membership to existing committees on sustainability, CTE, and the Advisory Council on Instruction. I would also like to see a combination of board and superintendent-created committees, including specific elementary, secondary advisory councils, an advisory council on technology, the Fine Arts, and ESL. Although I previously created a Potomac Magisterial District Budget Committee, I would love to see one formed at the district level. In closing, I am the proud son of a father who worked 40 years, almost, for the United Auto Workers and a mother who was previously with the MEA. I am proud of my blue-collar upbringing, and because of collective bargaining, my father and our family received excellent healthcare, and he was able to make a living wage and provide me and my three siblings with what we needed. The UAW provided me and my sister with scholarships to help pay for college. The UAW gave every Ford employee a PC when computers did not have a ubiquitous presence in American homes. These are just some of the many benefits collective bargaining afforded my family, and honestly, there may be more I never even knew about growing up. Tonight, I am proud to support formally giving our teachers a seat at the table because I believe it is a moral imperative. Thank you.
Lisa Zargav.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. So it's hard to follow Mr. Wilk on this. The community in this room is well aware that I am a teacher. I work in a neighboring district. I am a member of the union in my own district. We have all kinds of issues that are similar across county lines and some that are different. They're going to just look and feel different because we work in different places. I've always supported collective bargaining. My teacher brain wants it to be a good resolution. I spent a considerable amount of time looking at contracts in other states. I initially started in Maryland, and I've kind of spread out into other places. And one thing I do want to kind of add to what Mr. Wilk said is that I did not notice anything in a contract that says anything about taking away anything from parents. One of the things that I love about our schools here in Prince William is that we have committees in our schools that include the parents. We have PTOs. We have tons of parent volunteers in different kinds of sports and musical groups and robotics. So none of that stuff is going to go away because of collective bargaining. My only ask is that we are thoughtful and that we build capacity so that our educators, our staff, get what they are asking for, that we're able to do it. It's going to benefit our students and our community. And that's all I'm going to say right now because Mr. Wilk really covered a lot of bases there, so thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot has been said, so I will keep this short because collective bargaining will be a very long and extensive process. As some of my fellow board members have mentioned, we've spent quite a bit of time learning about collective bargaining in the state of Virginia and specifically how it relates to public schools, which is quite different from other organizations. Having said that, I will be voting in support of this motion. The necessary requirements were met from our Grade 12 staff to demonstrate that a majority of our employees desire this format to utilize their seat at the table. I look forward to working with my counterparts on this board to ensure the maximum amount of employee voice remains heard as we continue to develop this process. So that's it.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. So this is clearly an important decision. I have thoroughly examined the pros and cons of the issue of collective bargaining, as have my colleagues on the board. I acknowledge that the process of certification was validated and that there appears to be adequate support among Grade 12 employees to bring this to a vote. There were 3,529 verified signature cards, which is approximately 1/4 of the nearly 12,000 employees in Prince William County. Of the Grade 12 employees, we have 7,025 as of March 18. I also acknowledge the efforts of those who actively campaigned for this vote and their arguments in support of wanting greater say over their salaries, benefits, and workplace environment. Again, tonight, we make an important decision. I do not take it lightly. And the impact of this decision, in my opinion, will be felt for years to come. Therefore, I wish to make a number of points and share a viewpoint that has not been expressed throughout this process to the extent that I feel it could have been. All arguments have multiple sides and multiple viewpoints. And I am fully aware that I represent some viewpoints tonight that are not the majority position. My first point is that... My first point is that I wish to point out that the association does not represent a majority of our workforce as members of the association. Is my belief that employee support on this issue is not as broad as one would suppose, and the understanding of the issues by most of our workforce is superficial at best. My next point is that the words collective bargaining are significant. Both sides will be bound by contract and should expect to make concessions. Collective bargaining is, by its nature, adversarial. It will fundamentally change the nature of the relationship between our workforce and the division. I have heard speculation that it will be possible, about what will be possible under collective bargaining. Much of what is said is not necessarily true or possible. Both the laws of Virginia and budgetary limitations place real constraints on any future contract negotiations. Three, I continue to fear that collective bargaining will negatively impact our workforce, climate, and culture because it already has. A significant number of employees have watched from the sidelines as the association has waged its campaign. Many employees do not feel represented. They do not like the stance and the tactics they've seen. They do not dare express their thoughts or feelings for fear of reprisal, both personally and professionally. I stand with employees who fear giving more power to the hands of those who disrespect and misalign those who do not agree with them. Regardless of the vote tonight, I highlight the need for greater civility and fair-minded representation going forward. Engage in a thoughtful way on the issues and then lead in a way that is worthy of trust. Fourth, the current process works. Meet and confer strikes the right balance of power in protecting the rights of all parties involved: employees, management, board, parents, taxpayers, and students. It allows for timely conversation and negotiation. It is cooperative, nonadversarial. It has led to impressive results for our workforce. It doesn't cost us anything extra to administer. It allows for association input on decisions over salary, benefits, and working conditions. Five, this is a pro-teacher board. We have not only been listening, but we have been acting. We have addressed and remedied significant needs. Historic salary increases have been included in every budget since I have been on this board. We have begun a comprehensive study of our compensation plan. We approved baby bonding time. We rewarded everyone with a bonus last spring. We reinstated the option for flex time at the high school level. We added compensation for covering other teachers' classes and compensation for bus duty, just to name a few of the many pro-employee actions this board has taken. This is by no means the extent of our efforts. I think it goes without question that this board values its employees, and so do I. Five, the new law is an unfunded mandate. Its provisions are vague and open-ended. It does not provide appropriate guidance to local governments, nor any administrative or regulatory support. It lays out no statewide framework for labor administration. Instead, the burden of administering the law falls entirely on local jurisdictions in the form of an unfunded mandate. I am opposed to unfunded mandates on principle. Six, families have reason to fear that the impact of collective bargaining on both the education of their children, the impact of collective bargaining on both the education of their children and their parent voice. Given what families have been through the past two years and how much children have been affected by decisions outside of their control, parents are justified in feeling that they will be shut out of the decision-making process going forward, even more than they are now. One of the very first questions I asked about collective bargaining was this: what is the impact of collective bargaining on student achievement? How will collective bargaining affect ability to educate our children? These questions are fundamental to what we are doing here. They have not been answered to my satisfaction, although I appreciate Mr. Wilk's attempt tonight. In some, they have rarely been discussed at all, and that is one of my biggest concerns with collective bargaining. It's not good for kids. At least, I haven't seen the evidence that it is. So tonight, I will be voting my conscience. It's my conclusion after looking at the proposal to move to collective bargaining that it does not serve the best interests of children, the workforce, or the school division. For the reasons indicated, I warn that this decision, like school closures, will have consequences, some of which we most surely will come to regret.
Ms. Ralston, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Over the last year or so, I've been preparing for this vote, not knowing when or if it would come. I have done due diligence in the matter of collective bargaining. Since the affidavit was submitted, I have listened to everybody's input, reviewed laws, and asked many questions. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. It was an expensive process. The task of an elected official, as I see it, is to make informed decisions and to best represent their constituents. And in this case, my task is to make sure the education of 90,000 students and the safety of staff and students would not be impacted by my vote. To ensure that my vote would not waver, or obstruct, or impede my ability to govern and represent Brentsville. After reviewing emails, I want to take a moment to address some common points made. One, the PWA submitted only signatures certified Grade 12 employees, which does not include bus drivers, cafeteria staff, clerical staff, teacher assistants, or other non-licensed PWCS classified staff. It is true, the board does not have to wait until it receives a petition from those other groups. The board could decide if, when it drafts a resolution setting forth the details on collective bargaining, that it will include other bargaining units even though they did not submit signatures. This is an important point to make because there is a significant voice not included in the submission, which is reflected in the numbers. Two, as Mr. Wilk said, teachers and staff still cannot strike. Three, there are parameters set by the state that impact staff evaluation. Four, PWCS and VACS, excuse me, Virginia Retirement System are two different entities. We cannot change anything that the state mandates about the VRS. Next, a common theme found in emails in support of collective bargaining is that a seat at the table is to ask to be included in decision-making process that impacts their safety, profession, and compensation. This vote will impact my ability to advocate for teachers and staff. It will change the relationship held by the school board and its staff, and this is why it required deliberation. I've lost track in the numbers, I'm sorry. Next, as it was written by state legislators, no ordinance or resolution adopted pursuant to subsection A shall include provisions that restrict the governing body's authority to establish the budget or appropriate funds. This law did not come with funds. Lastly, collective means acting as a group, which means that we must consider all stakeholders and maintain our fiduciary responsibility. As a current teacher, I listen to all voices, including those that were not included on the petition. Since the start of my term, I have advocated for all staff consistently. Since collective bargaining will change this advocacy, I urge for finding a way to encompass all staff voices, input, and concerns. Collective bargaining, for me, was something that I had to deliberate on. I am from Virginia. It's new. It is still a right-to-work state. It was important to follow a process with integrity and make informed decisions, and to, most importantly, review the impact on students. But we would not have schools without teachers. And around 3,500 Class 12 employees said they wanted it, and I cannot ignore that. For this reason, I'm voting to move the discussion forward. This is the first step, and I vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Our employees have indeed achieved a threshold number of signatures to request consideration for collective bargaining with the Prince William County School Board. We appreciate their commitment to an open and transparent process. My record on advocating for our teachers has been unrivaled by any other past school board or neighboring school boards. Our teachers have seen record raises over the last four years: increases in starting salaries, a commitment to more competitive salaries with our neighbors, and minimum increases in healthcare premiums. No other school board has achieved what we've been able to achieve in the last four years. My pro-labor stance extends to my commitment to prevailing wages, reduction of wage theft, and engaging our trade unions for job and internship opportunities for all our students. My commitment to our staff has been a promise from the beginning of my campaign, delivered throughout my tenure, and will continue to be one of my highest priorities. To comply with this law, the school board will have a vote now on moving forward with collective bargaining. I think it's important to read the resolution that we have attached to the board docs, so I'm going to go ahead and read it. This is the resolution of the Prince William County School Board considering whether to establish collective bargaining between the school board and certain school board employees and provide guidance to the superintendent. Whereas, on April of 2020, the Virginia General Assembly passed legislation permitting local governing bodies, including school boards, to enter into collective bargaining agreements with respect to any matter relating to employment, provided that the public body adopts an ordinance or resolution authorizing as much. And whereas, pursuant to section 41572(c) VA Code, of any school board that has not adopted a resolution providing for collective bargaining may receive any employee certification from a majority of employees who self-identify as a bargaining unit. Within 120 days of receipt of such employee certification, shall take a vote on whether to adopt or not adopt a resolution to provide for collective bargaining. And whereas, the Virginia Code does not require any school board to adopt a resolution authorizing collective bargaining. And whereas, on March 18, 2022, school board clerk received an employee certification submission from the Prince William Education Association on behalf of all certified school board employees. And whereas, on May 10, 2022, the school board verified that a majority of all certified school board employees had signed in support of collective bargaining. And whereas, on June 7, 2022, the superintendent issued a statement of findings confirming the sufficiency of the March 18, 2022 employee certification. And whereas, the school board has 120 days from the date the certification was submitted or until July 16, 2022 to take a vote to adopt or not adopt a resolution to provide for collective bargaining. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby agrees to adopt a resolution to provide for collective bargaining by certified employees and any other school board employees deemed appropriate by the Prince William County School Board by directing the superintendent and division staff to draft a collective bargaining resolution for the school board's future consideration. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that the execution of this resolution is conclusive evidence of the Prince William County School Board's approval of this action. The motion on the table is...
Dr. Latif, I think the motion is to adopt the resolution as presented.
Yeah, so the motion, yeah, the Prince William County School Board votes whether to adopt a resolution providing collective bargaining by the school board employees. At this time, the school board should take their vote. Go ahead and please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one no. Wall, motion passed.
Moving on to the Energy and Environmental Sustainability Program update. Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Dr. Latif.
The award-winning environmental and sustainability update.
That's right. This evening, we do have a presentation from our Superintendent's Advisory Council on Sustainability. Commitment to our strategic plan, ensuring that our students are learning in a positive climate and culture, and welcoming safe and sustainable facilities, play a key role in this commitment. It is my pleasure to introduce Al Shiroki, our Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Brian Gorman, Supervisor of Energy Management and Sustainability, and Don Richardson, our Chair of the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Sustainability, to provide an update on our efforts in this important area.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. Chairman Latif, members of the board, Dr. McDade, again, it is a pleasure for us to provide you with the annual update from our Superintendent's Advisory Council on Sustainability. Again, I'm going to be very brief. I'm going to turn it over to our Chair, Mr. Don Richardson, who has served faithfully for the past year and has led our group with some tremendous efforts that you're going to see this evening, as well as our staff member, Mr. Brian Gorman, who's our supervisor for energy management sustainability. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gorman and Mr. Richardson.
While you're getting ready, Mr. Gorman, just advisory to the board, we'll take a break after this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. McDade, Chairman Latif, members of the school board. We appreciate you having us here this evening, and thank you for your time. We will be presenting a recap of where we stand on our energy and environmental sustainability goals and strategies. If I could get the next slide, please. We can do it here, yeah. So you're going to see some iconography tonight that's going to show you the path that we are following. Where we'll show you is three stops along the way, which are high priorities for the school division based on the resolution of 2020 issued by this school board. And what those initiatives lead us to is the goal of division-wide sustainability. We produce a lot of materials for the school division. One of the most important things that we do are activity books at the K through 5 level. In that area, we have five elementary books that we've worked on recently. The big goal I'd like to point out here is that our energy and environmental sustainability education component is very critical to actually building the next generation of environmental stewards. So we'd like to point out that we also are working with those same grade levels on our annual energy challenge. Since 2012, we have been able to provide over $800,000 in rebates based on the energy conservation efforts, and those have been returned to schools for participation in the program. We've also been able to produce an Earth Week module, which had several hundred groups logging in and utilizing a Canvas module, developed in-house proprietary content. We have some very talented staff members who produced that and are very committed to the program's success. With you, or you should have been given tonight, a bag. Some of those books will be contained within that bag. There's a few other things we wanted to point out that we've provided. Some are related to our design standards. Hopefully, you'll have a chance to take a look at those. Again, proprietary content that we were able to develop in-house with cooperation from the University of Ohio and West Virginia State University. It's been a very collaborative effort, and we've had the opportunity to work with some real best practice leaders in the field of sustainability and environmental management. We also have an eco-friendly box that's an example of what was provided to our SACS. You're going to hear from our Chairman, Don Richards, of the SACS. And in order to thank the group that has participated volunteering their time, we've provided those kind of goodies to them. They're all environmental friendly and sustainability, and we wanted to share those examples with So when we speak of environmental and energy sustainability education, we really focus on project-based learning. Project-based learning gets us, Facility Services, Energy and Sustainability, out in the schools, working on projects with students directly. Some of those efforts may involve outdoor recycling, others may involve some of our MEWE efforts, and gardening is a huge bonus that we have the opportunity with our master gardeners in Prince William County to be able to produce these project-based efforts at the school level and really give some tangible kind of experiences to our student body. I would say that what you see in Prince William County schools and those project-based experiences are much more rich than what I've been able to find in other school divisions. I might be a little bit biased. High-performance facilities. As we move to another stop on our process toward division-wide sustainability, you'll see this great picture where we accepted an award for the Green Ribbon School Division. That is a great accolade, and I think with regard to the Department of Education, we earned it. And so we've worked hard as a school division, as a student body, to pull together and really meet the criteria. Now we have to move to the next step. There's always a next step. The next step is the goal of trying to get five schools by 2025 to individually achieve the Green Ribbon status. We believe that can be done. Schools such as Freedom High School are well-positioned to receive that accolade now. And so we're beginning that process of going through and looking at the opportunities that our schools have with regard to their existing programs. that our schools have with regard to their existing programming, with regard to the efforts that are being put forth by the teachers in those schools. Dr. Jessica Dwaron is a great example. She's at Freedom High School, a teacher who has invested extensive amounts of time. She serves on our Sustainability Advisory Council, but she's also committed to the kids. She's committed to the process of building environmental stewards. And so again, I point out that that's a great example. We'll continue to work on that, and we'll update you next year, hopefully with a few schools that we'll be applying for. Continuing with that, as I alluded to, we've included these design standards in your bag this evening, so you can see the efforts of our staff. Facility Services worked very closely together. Coming out of the pandemic, you can understand it's a very unique environment for people to kind of be able to collaborate again. We did a whole lot on Zoom for a couple of years, but man, we took off and we were just running. And we produced a document that I think will form the image for Prince William County Schools' facilities, renovations, additions, new construction in the coming years. And this is going to be a groundbreaking effort for us. Tonight, I believe we have some awards also on our procurement docket. One is for the award of the design of the Net Zero Elementary School, the replacement for Okaquan. So we've spent several months going through vendors, issuing an RFP, working as a team. We had some educators on that council, working together, evaluation committee, pardon me. We had some new construction folks. We had others throughout Facility Services. But it was a diverse group who came to that conclusion. Thank you. We appreciate you looking at that tonight on the consent agenda. I think you'll be very happy with the product that this group can bring to the school division. Also, we have been quite busy, and I think the purchasing department should be thanked for their efforts. They return all the emails. They get on the phone with us. We're also going to be awarding tonight our Solar PPA contract. Now, that was something that was asked by the school board back in 2020. And now solar is just going to take off like the thriving futures rocket that it is. We're going to find lots of sites that we can incorporate solar into. We've got to do some due diligence because now we know what we can procure. Now we know what is available to us. So it might take us a little time to get off the ground, but I think you'll see us being able to incorporate renewable energy more and more into our school programming. We'll continue with our LED replacement project. Thank you for additionally funding the next year of that progress. We're making great progress. We've continued to implement our smart irrigation, and that program is, all the way through the high school and middle schools, complete. And so now we are looking at the opportunities to complete and round out the remaining elementary schools that require irrigation and where we can implement those controls for conservation efforts.
Brian, are our water fountains back on for refilling?
Are, I'm sorry?
Are our water fountains back on for refilling yet? Are we still doing this COVID business?
We're just doing bottle fillers at this.
You have bottle fillers, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're not doing water fountains yet.
We're just not doing the water fountain yet. Thanks, sir. All right, let me make sure I'm on the right slide.
Let him finish the presentation, then you can hit him with questions. I just...
Yes, sir.
I have some questions, but go ahead.
I imagine. I'm looking forward to it. So community engagement is huge, right? We can't do all of this without working with the county, without working with parents, without working out in the community. I think there's a lot we can do in the schools. That's a lot we're going to do to educate. But when we look at community engagement, we also turn to our community members. And I'll ask Mr. Don Richardson to come up at this time and talk a little bit about some of our efforts on the community engagement piece.
Brian, let's have some questions for you first.
Oh, yeah.
And then we'll have Don come up, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
What do you guys want to do? All right, all right. Go ahead, Don. Go ahead. Actually, Don, Mr. Chairman Richardson, go ahead and finish up, and then we'll ask questions afterwards. Mr. Chairman, and I have to thank you for the efforts and all the work you've done on this committee for this last year and a half, two years. I mean, this has been outstanding. But we look forward to listening to you now. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Brian, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. McDade. It's good to be back. You have accomplished, together, a lot since you passed the sustainability initiative back in June of 2020. I commend the school board and the superintendent for the commitment that they've put forward to make the sustainability initiative successful. And as Brian has already described, we're already making a lot of positive steps forward. We gave you, we gave the superintendent a memo with recommendations back in October of 2021, not all of which obviously can be enacted right away. But we were very pleased to see some significant movement forward. We had identified the need for additional staffing to make these sustainability initiatives and energy management successful. And so we saw this year, there's a three-year plan. This year, we saw funding for two more full-time employees, and that's to get that started. And then the remainder of the three-year plan, we will add additional positions. The other thing, as Brian mentioned, was the LED replacement project. And I'm, again, pleased that money was in the budget this year to move that forward. And there is, like with the other one, there is a three-year plan to get that initiative completed by fiscal 2025, I believe, or '26. The other two items that were on that, that you saw on the previous slide, one of them was the smart irrigation project. There's not necessarily a timeline on that, but that's a significant place where we're continuing to move forward with efforts to manage our water in a responsible and cost-effective way. And then again, we are, we already have water bottle filling stations in all the schools, but we advocated for more of them so that the bigger schools with the bigger populations would have more access to water bottle filling stations. Those are the major ones you got that involve money. The slide I have up right now, we had some additional recommendations that don't involve funding, but are just as important. We added the environmental literacy category to the professional development catalog. We have appointed representatives to the Joint Environmental Task Force with the county. The county is a bit behind us. They are still in the process of making their appointments to that task force and getting that stood up and running. But our representatives are ready to go. And there's a lot of collaboration that will need to happen for the initiatives that the county and we have put forward. We're going to have to do it together. So that's one very helpful step forward that we were pleased to see adopted this year. We have also implemented site-based building performance metrics using ARC. And then as we go forward, let me see here, there's something I... Yeah. All right. Ah, yes. The site-based building performance metrics are actually going to be done at eight pilot schools. And so we're looking forward to seeing the results of that as we move forward. For the next two years, we've just finished our first two-year term as a council. For the next two years, our goals are to continue to add, you know, continue the plans, additional staffing, LED replacement, and some of the other small, smaller financial investments. We are going to develop a plan for SACs to engage with the community. We believe strongly that getting the community involved, you know, to a greater degree, is going to be essential. So we are going to work on that. We are going to continue to educate ourselves as a council about emerging technologies related to energy and other topics related to sustainability and provide, you know, feedback and guidance as staff presents potential ideas for the future. And finally, we are going to be involved with providing feedback for the design of the Net Zero replacement at Okaquan Elementary, which we're all very excited to be part of. So we have a lot ahead of us. We will be bringing back, again, next spring at this time, our report and our final recommendations for next season. And we're looking forward to continued progress as far as that is concerned. So, Brian?
Sir.
Mr. Richardson, real quick, just, first of all, again, I want to thank you for all the work you've done. You didn't mention the walkability initiative that the committee recommended to the school board. If you want to just briefly, you know, 30 seconds, talk about that. We voted on that last week, right?
Yes, I believe you had that on the agenda.
I missed that meeting, but we did pass that, correct?
You had it on the agenda last week. This is an example of what I was talking about when I said that the county and the school division are going to have to work together on some things. The purpose behind that resolution was simply to say that as the county puts together its revised and updated comp plan. There is a chapter called Mobility, and they're working on trails and walkability initiatives around the county. And we wanted, we felt it was important that the school division say, hey, you can't talk about walkability in Prince William County unless you talk about walkability and bikeability to our schools. You have 90,000 students, 12,000 employees. So we appreciate the school board adopting that resolution. I think it puts us on record as saying that that is one area where the county government and the school board can cooperate going forward in a systematic way to really make a big difference in walkability in the county. So thank you for passing that. We appreciate the support.
Mr. Richardson, I also want to remind the public that Don Richardson served on this school board many years ago. He helped modernize our school system, did a terrific job. We stand on his shoulders as we do the work we're doing here. His experience in local government has helped guide this committee. And with Brian Gorman, you guys have done an amazing job on the comprehensive aspect of our energy and sustainability initiative. It seems like every time I read the reports, we haven't missed anything. And you guys have been, you know, the subcommittee chairs, Mayor Ernie Porta, Dr. Porta, and John Wheeler have done a terrific job. I sat here and lobbied my colleague just now, Jen Walde, reappoint Mr. Richardson to this committee for another two years. We have, we've really benefited from your, you know, your local government experience, understanding, and working with our partners over at the county. This is really important stuff, and as you help us navigate this. And then, Brian, to our staff here, you have, you all have led on this. You're leading the county on this. You're leading the region on this, and we truly appreciate this work. It's why we were, you know, awarded the green ribbon. Again, the comprehensive nature of the work, your team, all of you all are doing. Al, everything has been really just a model for how this should be done. And I can't thank you enough. And I can tell you, the constituents that I represent, who care deeply about energy and sustainability, are extraordinarily appreciative of the work we have done over the last two years on just these issues. And the way you talk about what we can do with spending money and what we can do without spending money has been absolutely critical. And again, thank you for that comprehensive nature. I'll turn it over to the colleagues on the board. Ms. Williams, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a whole lot of questions. But I am going to take this opportunity to say first to Mr. Shiroki, thank you for your role in this effort with energy and environmental sustainability in our schools division. I'm going to take a slight opportunity to embarrass you a little bit and tell you how much I appreciate all of your dealing with my random, hey, Dominion's going to have a program for electric buses that schools can qualify for. I just saw it in the newspaper. Can we do this? Hey, I just saw about electric this. Can we do this? I saw this program in New York. Maybe we can bring it down here. I don't often talk about environmental issues or sustainability. It's not the top of my list of advocacy for being a board member, but it's something that has always been near and dear to my heart. Not that it matters now, but I did Ecology Club Lakewood Middle when it first opened. Yeah, kind of old. And probably still was the first person in our neighborhood to have recycled tires for my playground equipment in the backyard. So I have a long history of it, as well as being a former facility manager. I understand how hard the work is that you have to do, gentlemen, to convince the rest of us that what you do is important and it matters, and why we have different light bulbs, and why it makes a difference whether, when we add on or we make renovations to schools, the older parts, how they fit with the newer parts and building codes. And we don't often talk about that, but it's integral to the work that you do. And I just want you to know, Mr. Shiroki, that that is very much appreciated. To you, Mr. Gorman, I will still say that you are probably one of our best steals from an outside organization when it comes to environmental and sustainability. I know we didn't truly steal you, but I know that when this program started after serving for so long, that it was not an in-house program. It was an out, it was a contracted outsourced program. And you led the charge to coming onboard with us and continuing to grow and develop this program. And not only took it from giving the board updates, but integrating it fully into our school division for every student and staff member to be able to participate, not compete against each other, who turns off the lights the most and gets the bonus, but understand why they're doing it, why it's critical. I appreciate that. I value that. And I also value, for all of you gentlemen, the fact that you listen to our students' voices when this, in this issue, because it matters so dearly to them. Mr. Gorman, I can't tell you how much joy my heart felt when I hear you talk about Freedom. They have an environmental and sustainability program there for their students. They came earlier this year and presented the board with reusable water bottles and spoke about the program. And I'm very excited to hear that they are positioned already to be a Green Ribbon School. That's outstanding. Mr. Richardson, thank you again for your leadership as Chair. I think that your historical knowledge of our school division and combined with your passion and quality leadership and teaming with our division staff has served us well, and I hope that you will continue in this role. I love environmental science, because I'm a nerd. I like science. So I can't wait to hear our further updates and when we begin the school year again. So thank you very much, gentlemen, for all of your hard work and efforts and keeping us on track, not only on track, but leading the way. Thank you.
First of all, I just want to thank all of you for what you've done. I think bringing project-based learning and your environmental literacy piece, blending the curriculum and bringing students, involving students and involving teachers and staff. I just want to thank you for all that you've done. I do have a, it's not a question. I just want a clarification on, under the consent agenda, you have, because I'm very excited about Okaquan Elementary being a net zero, first net zero. So for the public, would you tell them what that means? And in 16.12, under consent, could you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. So I'm not looking at the consent agenda, but I assume that is the award for the vendor for our architectural and engineering services for that. So net zero for us will mean that the school will be able to produce energy equal to the amount that it consumes during the school day. So we will have renewable energy on-site. We will also have very high-performing, energy-efficient systems that are built to reduce the actual amount of consumption throughout the school day. So the school should be net zero within its first year, albeit, we're going to need to do some commissioning, making sure we understand how to operate that facility. But the design of it will have it ultimately, again, producing as much energy as it would use, therefore reducing its reliance on the electric grid.
The slated date is 2025, am I correct?
Yes, SY 26, but December of '25, yes.
Okay. And I wanted to, Al Shiroki, you're leaving us. And I just want to say that I appreciate everything that you've done and that you listened to some crazy things when I met you. I remember we talked about the feel, and you didn't say this inhaling this rubber was not crazy. You said, well, Mrs. Jessie, I'm going to find other avenues, and you told me the pros and cons of that. And with Okaquan, I remember the principal at Okaquan walked out at that time, who was not the present principal. He said, there's enough land here to build a school. And I had presented that, and you believed me. And we talked about vertical schools because in that eastern, in the eastern corridor, we don't have the land. So for years, we were, I was working with various people trying to get more schools, and we just didn't have the land. And this vertical school concept, I appreciate you for that. And I think there is a gratitude cup that I gave to you tonight. And I appreciate everything that you've done. It's one of the newer cups that I bought because I ran out of cups. But I just want to say that I appreciate you. I'm sorry that you're leaving. But I know whoever inherits your skills and your gifts and your just, your ability to work with people, I think that Prince William is going to lose someone, but you're going to gain someone. So for those of you who do not know, most of you, many of you do know, that I have a name for him. And he laughs about it, but I call him Dennis the Menace. When you look at his eyes, he's got, and so people, because his eyes dance. And I just want to say I... And I just want to say I appreciate you, and I am very, very honored to have worked with you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jesse, thank you for those kind remarks. All right, anybody else? Okay, Ms. Wall.
All right, thank you. This is really interesting, actually. I want to thank you for the hard work of the committee. I, it's obvious to me that the council, are you a council or a committee?
Council.
A council. A council is, is, is really running well and producing great results for us. So I appreciate the hard work and all of the many hours, Mr. Richardson, Mr. Gorman, and Mr. Shiroki. And one thing I, I know is these fields of, these STEM fields are really important. It's, it's, it's helpful for us to have initiatives like this in our schools because this is where a lot of the jobs are and will be in these emerging technologies. And that's important for us as we prepare and develop our workforce at young ages, as we get kids interested, and then we give them the skills and the abilities to move forward with their passions. So I do appreciate it. I had a question. For the five green ribbon schools, is this going to be an invitation to apply? Is this going to be perhaps a proposal that a school would put together and then compete to be one of the schools? Can you shed just a little bit of insight into how that, we're going to accomplish that goal of five schools?
Sure. Yes, ma'am. So we're trying to create an equitable process that we can currently benchmark where all the schools stand with regard to their environmental and sustainability infrastructure. Our team is working on that. That's kind of in concert with the grant that we received for environmental literacy from NOAA. That's a three-year funded grant, $300,000. We had the good fortune of bringing on a teacher in that position for three years. And I think you'll see that that program will align to be able to look at the existing inventory of schools that we have, but also broadcast a wide net to try to generate interest from other schools, where they may not necessarily have, let's say, the, the criteria that aligns, for instance, with the green ribbon schools, but we can create another opportunity to provide them accolades and rewards here within the school division for their efforts. Because the efforts are on kind of different levels, if you will, and we don't ever want to make it a group disqualified on the basis of not having some infrastructure that either their school is just not designed to hold. And so we want to make sure that it's multi-tiered in its approach. So maybe an internal green ribbon program that addresses those that may not otherwise qualify for that high benchmark that the Department of Education sets. But we will be involving all in the process.
Okay, great, thank you. That's, that's interesting to hear, and I'm glad to hear that we'll be working, working on that. Follow-up on the water fountains questions, I've also wondered that. I've seen many water fountains up in schools where I haven't had a water bottle and I've wanted a drink of water. That's not necessarily your committee's thing, right? Probably not. But I wanted to say, I am very appreciative of the water bottle stations at all of our schools. And I know that was a big cost and a big effort, and it's really great. And I think that, you know, we're encouraging kids to bring their own water bottle, which reduces waste of plastics all over the place. But it's also, it changes habits, and it's, it's very great service, so.
If I could highlight that water bottle fillers that were installed in Prince William County schools, they were installed in-house by our plumbing team. And where necessary, our own electrical staff in-house with the department, the facilities department, forgive me, I'm still getting used to that name. But with the facilities department. So every school having between two and four, if you will, water bottle stations came about as a direct result of our staff's intentional effort to order water bottle filling stations during the pandemic, keep track of stock, keep track of spreadsheets of where they needed to go. So while it's an initiative of the sustainability efforts that we promote, I just wanted to highlight that the facilities department and our team that we work with played a vital role in getting that done. So many kudos to our, you know, our staff of trade folk.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification, and well done, and kudos to everybody who worked on that. That's been really great. My last question is, is there a student or are there opportunities for internship, externship kind of up internships or externships at the council? Is this part of the council's work to look for opportunities for students to either serve with the council or do research for the council? Remind me if we have any.
We have, we have, we have had students as active participants, full-voting members of the council since the beginning, at least two, if not more. Some of them were selected, you know, by, by the superintendent to serve as student representatives. Some of them were actually appointed by some of you to, to be your district representative. I have to say, they've been full participants and, and have been very, very interested, and have, several of them have indicated when they go on to college that they're going to pursue related studies. So that's been a, that's been a great, that's been a great benefit to us because in, in doing all these sustainability initiatives, getting the students, particularly the high school students, not just on the council, but just generally, getting them involved in all this is part of the environmental literacy piece, is part of the experiential learning piece, where you, you get them, you get the students involved in some of the things we're going to be doing down the road in the schools. So there's, the sky's the limit, and, and they definitely are, are welcome members and, and helpful. Several of them have, they've graduated, they've transitioned off. We've got some new members coming on. But yeah, they're, they're definitely a, a full part of the council.
That's fantastic, that's great. My last comment is just thank you, Mr. Shiroki, we're going to miss you. Thank you for all you've done to help us. You've done a lot, I know you have. And we really will miss you. All right, thank you.
Ms. Jackson.
I just want to also say thank you to all three of you and send my sincere thanks to you, Mr. Shiroki, and that we're going to miss you. I am really proud of the efforts our school system and our sustainability committee has made to make our school system, I'm proud and impressed and thankful to make our school system more environmental and to prepare and safeguard our future for our future. This effort has spread throughout the division. I was recently invited to Piney Branches Outdoor Classroom, and I listened to the new voices of environmental stewards, young voices, and the connection to the curriculum, and it was just really impressive. I also heard more about the composting program, so I just have a follow-up question, and I know you've touched on this in the past, but could you just elaborate further on the, the compost grant? How many schools are doing it and any future plans on it? And then that's my only question.
Sure. Well, and I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the team that developed the program you're asking the question about. Ms. Jeannie Jabara has led the way on our composting efforts and environmental literacy efforts. But with regard to composting, we have eight schools currently in that pilot program. Jeannie has some folks helping her be able to track all of that. We're doing waste audits. Thank you, Dr. McDade, for helping us out there. Waste audits are not necessarily fun, but they're a necessary part of the process. And we expect that we're going to expand that program out. We're working with the county to be able to get some composting resources as far as transporting waste from our schools to the compost site on Balls Ford Road. And with that, in the next year, we'll be able to expand out to more and more schools. And I think Jeannie jokes sometimes that she likes digging through the trash, but I really think she has a passion for turning, you know, organic waste into compost, and it has turned out to be such a successful endeavor. So you will see that program continue.
I really appreciate that explanation, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
You know, we, I, great work, all of you. And Al, thank you for the service to this, this school division and this community for so long, and we wish you the best as you move on to your next step in the future. And, and we truly appreciate it. Brian, to the whole team, you know, we thank you. And any opportunities you guys can find for students, I know we have some internships here for students in the Kelly Building, any, you know, let us know whatever you think you need, we're happy. The free stuff is always the most helpful, we like that. But no, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll conclude the environmental sustainability presentation. We will take a 10-minute recess.
Dr. Latif, can I really quickly just acknowledge?
Yes, please.
Al Shiroki. I know that everyone has given, you know, support and said thank you, but on behalf of the school division, the executive team, and myself, I really want to thank you, Mr. Shiroki, for your service in Prince William County Public Schools for the past three years, the most challenging years in the school division. You served as the associate superintendent for operations, and then I came along and changed your title to chief operations officer. And in both of those titles, you have really served this division well and with students first at heart. Mr. Shiroki has 25 years of experience in education, and he has been an invaluable member of our executive leadership team. And it is not lost on us that the operations team really had to carry us through during this time of the global pandemic, even when we came back in, fully in person. While other school divisions around us were not able to provide bus service, even with the, the bus challenges and the shortages, the team still made it work so that we can get our students to school in person. And so I just really want to thank you for all of your efforts and your teams and for leading such a strong team. We absolutely will miss your presence in Prince William County, but we wish you well. Congratulations on your retirement and your future career endeavors.
And with that, we'll take a 10-minute break. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so let's get back to business here, folks, if everyone wants to grab their seats. We are now moving on to superintendent's time. Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. It is my pleasure to welcome the newest member of our executive cabinet, Mr. Corey Harris, to his first board meeting as a new member to Prince William County Public Schools. Corey, can you please stand quickly?
All right.
Thank you.
Bring your sleeping bag next.
Mr. Harris began his role last week as associate superintendent for middle schools. He fills the role as a second associate superintendent for middle schools, joining Catherine Porter-Lucas, who also serves in the role. Mr. Harris joins us from Boston Public Schools, where he served as chief of schools and chief accountability officer since 2019. Associates, he will have, in collaboration with Ms. Porter-Lucas, they'll be supporting and directing the 17 PWCS middle schools, as well as Porter and Pennington Traditional Schools and the Oakesville School. Mr. Harris has 26 years of experience in instructional leadership roles across numerous school systems. He has worked as a teacher, assistant principal, principal, and senior director. Prior to joining Boston Public Schools, he served as director of middle schools for Des Moines Public Schools. Welcome, Mr. Harris. I would also like to welcome our school board student representatives for the 2223 school year, Dania Sharifi, who will be a senior next year at Gainesville High School, will return this year as one of our student representatives. And then she'll be joined by Chance Williams, who will be a senior next year at Forest Park High School. And our alternate, as stated earlier this evening, is Christian Daniels, who's a rising senior at Hilton High School. Chance and Christian were here with us earlier this evening, and I would like to, on behalf of the school division, just celebrate and congratulate our two student board representatives. And I look forward to working with them and in engaging them as they use their voice to represent the student body. Today marked the last day for students for the 2122 school year. I know many people are ready to put this school year behind us. It has been challenging, but it also has been very rewarding, and I look forward to the promising future for our school division. I had the opportunity to attend many graduation celebrations over the past several weeks, and I am always in awe of the accomplishments of our seniors. They faced enormous obstacles over the course of the last few years, and so I want to extend deep and hearty congratulations to the class of 2022 and to the remainder of our students who've completed another significant milestone in their educational career. Thank you to our teachers and staff for their hard work and unwavering dedication to our students and to our parents, guardians, and community members for their continued support of our students and our schools and school division. I want to wish everyone a safe summer, and remember that PWCS is offering several summer programs to our students. And as a reminder, all PWCS students do have access to free online tutoring 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Through our partnership with Paper, every student has unlimited access to trained tutors to ask questions, work through problems, get feedback on their writing, and grow their confidence. So we want our students to remain engaged over the summer, have fun, but also continue learning. Prince William Public Libraries also offers several programs to encourage reading over the summer, and so I want to encourage all of our families and students to check out the PWC Public Libraries website. As I stated, it has been a challenging school year, but we have so much to be proud of, which includes a successful return to in-person learning, the implementation of the unfinished learning plan to support academic and social-emotional learning for all students impacted by the pandemic. Working together, we established the Vision 2025, launching Thriving Futures Four-Year Strategic Plan. Our school board adopted the strongest budget in a generation aligned to our strategic priorities, with significant investments in our teachers, employees, and students. And our students continue to thrive throughout this school year, breaking records and winning titles at the local, state, and national level in both academics and correct extracurricular activities. I am incredibly proud of all that we have accomplished this year and excited about the tremendous opportunities that lie ahead in the future of this great school division. To close out my report tonight, I would like to introduce Dr. Tim Neal, supervisor of program evaluation, to share results of our most recent survey on school start times. Rita Goss, associate superintendent for teaching and learning, and Al Shiroki, chief operating officer, will support this presentation by addressing questions the board members may
Dr. Latif, school board members, Dr. McDade, I'm pleased to present to you tonight the findings from the school start time surveys that we administered earlier this spring. So for the next few minutes, I'm going to go over the key findings of the survey, do a quick review of the process, give you a brief description of our respondent characteristics, and then go over the results with you in more detail and a final summary. So in terms of key findings, the number of responses that we collected provide an accurate reflection of viewpoints and opinions for our parents and guardians, staff, and our secondary students. A majority of our parents, about 57%, and a majority of our staff, about 57%, and a plurality of our students, coming in about 43%, want to keep our school start times the same. Opposition to changing school start times is generally more intense than the support for changing them. And ultimately, the results do not show support for making a substantive change to the school start times for the school year 2324. So in terms of the reviewing the, the survey itself and how it was administered, it was sent to all staff, parents, guardians, and students in grades five through 12 on April 29th, and it closed about two weeks later on May 13th. Reminders were sent multiple times to respondent groups via email, text message, Dr. McDade's end-of-the-week letter, the scoop, and we did, this happened in the second week of administration. Parents and guardians were also able to complete paper copies of surveys at the schools and send them to us, which we then incorporated into the results. The survey itself addressed four main components, the overall characteristics, so we could see who was responding, preferences for the start time, the intensity of support for each option, and respondents identified barriers and benefits. So in terms of our students, we had just about 16,500 students responding with 10,563 fully completing the survey. About 10,000, a little more than 10,000 of those respondents were secondary students, which accounts for about 20% of the middle school and high school students across the division. In looking at their characteristics, many of them, about half, were, indicated they were involved in a specialty program. Some indicated about a quarter of them that they had after-school employment. About a third of them also said they were responsible for caring for siblings after school. responsible for caring for siblings after school. Additionally, about half of them also reported being involved in some sort of after-school athletic or club. So across all of these descriptions, you can see we have a variety of perspectives amongst our students. In terms of our parents, we had just under 17,000 parents respond, with about 11,400 completely completing the survey from start to finish. These parents had kids that were in grade levels from kindergarten through 12th grade, so we had a variety of respondents. 40% of them reported having students enrolled in a specialty program. Many of them, about a quarter of them, said that their older siblings cared for younger siblings in their family. So because we had our parents log in with a student ID number, we were able to map that. So with the assistance of our planning colleagues, we were able to look to see what is our respondent distribution across Prince William County. So the graphic on the left shows you the maps of where our families live based on our September 30 count. The map on the right shows the respondent distribution for this particular survey. In looking at those patterns, you can see they are fairly similar, showing that we managed to get the survey into the hands of families from across Prince William County. In terms of our staff, we had just about 6,600 Prince William County employees access the survey, with almost a little more than 6,300 completing the survey. 92% of those respondents were school-based employees, and of those, a majority of them, about 78%, were teachers or instructional support staff. The remaining 8% of the survey respondents were from central office. They were largely support staff, with the remaining being administrators and specialists. So when we look at all of our respondent characteristics, given the number of parent responses we received, the inclusion of parents and guardians with students at all grade levels, the variety of programs and activities, and our geographic distribution, the parent response data are an accurate reflection of the views in Prince William County. Given the number of staff responses, these data are also an accurate reflection of the staff views of Prince William County. And lastly, with the number of student responses and their distribution, these data are likely an accurate reflection of the secondary student views in Prince William County. The sample sizes that we managed to get are large and varied enough that these data can be used reliably for decision-making. Just as a reminder, the survey had multiple options that respondents could choose from. Option one was the no-change option, which was leave things as they are. Option two was shifting, which meant that all school times would shift by an hour, so high schools would start about 8:30. And option three was the flip option, where you would invert the bell schedules. So elementary school would start early at 7:30, with high school starting later at 9:30. You might recall from the presentation earlier in the spring, there was a fourth option. That option was deemed not feasible, and therefore was removed from the survey. So in terms of which option respondents prefer, a majority of our parents and a majority of our staff prefer the no-change option, option one. A plurality of our students, so about 43%, also prefer the no-change option. It is worth noting here that that means about 57% of students indicated they do want some type of a change. In addition to asking which option they preferred, we also asked a question, giving respondents the opportunity to indicate how strongly they supported each option. We did this because it's possible that somebody could prefer option one, but also like option two, and we wanted to be able to capture these data. So intensity of support was, on a four-point scale, ranging from not at all to a lot. And when we look at this data for staff, what we see is that there is a lot of support for not changing school start times and fairly intense opposition for options two and three. With students, and this is a really interesting finding, there is also fairly high support for leaving the school start times as they are. There also is support for option two, with fairly intense opposition to option three. And with parents, this largely mirrors the staff data, where parents are in favor of leaving the start times as they are, with fairly intense opposition to changing school start times with either option two or option three. In addition to which options they preferred, we also asked them to identify benefits and barriers. These options were derived from the literature, and parents were allowed to check the ones they preferred, but also write in additional benefits or barriers as they saw fit. So across all three groups, the most highly identified benefit was increased adolescent sleep. Students also indicated that they would have improved attendance, decreased stress, and increased driving safety. Parents and staff also, a fair number of them didn't see any benefits to this, but they also saw benefits to academic performance. It is worth noting that there were, for increased sleep, the research does note that there are benefits for this, when school start times are delayed to 8:30. In terms of student voices, and this is at the request of our student representatives, who wanted to ensure that we incorporated student voice into this, these two comments were left in the benefits section, and they are illustrative of others that were in this area. So one student said, "In school, when you're tired, it's hard to concentrate and focus on work when your eyes give out on you. Hence, the reason getting up so early can be challenging. Adding to behavior, people can get annoyed easily or cranky when they're sleepy, especially when they're feeling demanded to work or learn." Another student wrote, "Due to having a lot of homework for high school, I end up sleeping later, and because I live so far from my high school, I have to wake up at 5:00 a.m. to be able to make it to my bus. Having a later start time would allow me to get much more sleep and would improve my focus and concentration in class." In terms of barriers, the largest barrier, largest two barriers really that we're seeing were challenges to extracurricular activities and disruptions to the schedules, either parent schedules or student schedules at home. It also should be noticed that there were some other commonalities, but there, such as family responsibilities and transportation, but they were less intense than these other barriers. In terms of student voice, a student made a nice, bold list for us, and he said, "One, getting home too late, having to have sports and clubs before school, getting less sleep because I will get home so late, parents' work, and I wouldn't be able to drive me to get to my specialty program express bus stop unless it is very early before their workday. They both leave for work by 7:00 a.m. I don't want to have to quit AP Scholars." Another student wrote, "If you make the school end late, then it's hard for everyone to make it to sports or clubs, and it's hard for people to enjoy their at-home hobbies. If it ends too late, a student agenda would look like this: go to school, come home, do work if they have some, go to sleep. It's difficult. It ends late." There were a few additional findings that came about from this. The impact on specialty programs was raised multiple times as potential barriers, and one possibility that came out was looking at an 8:00 a.m. start time instead of an 8:30 start time. This is a variation of the shift model. It is viable in terms of scheduling, but it should be noted that this does not align with the medical recommendations and may not yield the benefits related to the natural sleep cycles. In summary, a large number of responses were received from staff, students, and parents across all schools. A majority of parents and staff and a plurality of students want to keep the school start times the same.
Can you go back one slide on that additional finding, Slide 21?
I sure can.
When it says, "A possibility suggested by all groups was 8:00 a.m. start time instead of 8:30," do you mean 7:30?
So, no. So instead of shifting the start times from 7:30 to 8:30, they recommended shifting from 7:30 to 8:00. So high schools would start at 8:00, and then it would cascade on from there.
Yeah, so that's why I don't understand the sentence. The possibility suggested by all groups was an 8:00 a.m. start time instead of 8:30. Shouldn't it be instead of 7:30?
So in the shift option, the possibility was an 8:30 start time, and so they are offering a variation of the shift model.
I see, relative to that. But compared to currently, they like an 8:00 instead of a 7:30 for high school?
That is correct.
I think that's the way I would say it, but that's fine. Sorry, moving on.
Opposition to options two and option three, so shift and flip is intense for staff and parents, and opposition to number three is strong for students. There were sufficient data collected from all respondents to provide an accurate reflection of viewpoints and opinions for parents, staff, and secondary students, and the results do not show support for making a substantive change at this time to school start times for school year 2324. Lastly, I do want to acknowledge the students that I worked with. Their partnership in developing, administering, and analyzing the start time survey and the results was valuable, and it's my opinion that they served as a model for civic engagement and leadership with their peers, and it was a true pleasure to work with them.
Okay, questions? Anybody have any questions? Ms. Williams?
No question. Just want to say thank you so much for partnering with the students. I know this was a two-year process. They brought this up during the pandemic. It's been brought up years in the past, but I'm always going to continue to praise and advocate when we provide that type and level of engagement with our students, with our staff, because I believe when students have ownership of their ideas and we support that, great things can happen. And this is a great example of that. And thank you for taking the time to acknowledge the role that they played and how collaboratively you worked together with them. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Jessie?
Hi. I want to thank you for this report also. I sort of anticipated that there would be a request for no change, only because, and I'm wondering if you have looked into this, they've gone through so many changes in the last couple of years. I think we may have had a different response had we not gone through the pandemic, and parents have changed their schedule, their kids have been at home, they've been back and forth on different hybrid schedules. Did you look at that? And also, another factor is that, I don't recall, someone said the percentage of our staff that lives in Stafford County is pretty high, and I wondered if that was also a factor that you thought played into this result.
The, I'll take that question. The team did not look, what they did was studied, you know, proposed options for changing start time, but they did not look at some of those other factors that you have identified, such as where staff members may live or collect any data to make a comparison of, you know, parent, community, and staff thoughts as it relates to, you know, pandemic and how that impact or plays a role on their decision-making for this current proposal. So this was strictly a survey just on the current state of where our families are with the recommendation for a change in start time.
Thank you. I think that when I've talked to people, they've said that we don't want any more change, and I'm just wondering if down the road, if things stabilize a little bit later, and maybe down the road, we can look at this again. But there's been so many changes in schedules for parents and babysitting. I noticed that babysitting was also another situation that we were looking at. But I want to thank you. It was a very comprehensive report. Thank you.
We do plan to remain, you know, vigilant and listen to what our families and our students are saying. So at this time, this is the sentiment from the public, but we will, as necessary, revisit this should the need arise or families are suggesting that we take another look at the proposal.
Ms. Wall?
So I appreciate the efforts and the hard work that went into this and the analysis. Thank you very much. I am curious, what are some possible next steps looking out a year or two? I don't necessarily want to just stick this on the shelf and completely forget about it. I continue to be curious about how other school systems who have start times that are different from ours make it work. I mean, obviously, it does work somewhere. So could you speak to some possible next steps looking out a year or two? I think Ms. Jessie's point is well taken. Change fatigue, COVID, change fatigue, you know, all those are big factors. People just want normal, familiar, don't change my life, I just got it back to normal. So, but could you speak to that?
Absolutely. So my team stands ready to collect additional data as necessary request. I have, I should note, encouraged our school board representatives to continue to be advocates for things that they believe are improvements to our school division. And so, again, that collaborative venture is also at the present. We will also be able to engage with our neighboring school divisions and utilizing some of the network we have to continue to collect information on how they've navigated these particular changes, because there are several school divisions that have done this around us, and we can continue to engage with them and learn the best practices from them. Lastly, I think in terms of making the next steps forward, continuing to stay abreast of the research, as my team tends to do, but also examining through our continuous improvement process, what are the things that we do internally in Prince William County that can actually enable this? So this may entail, for example, continue to examine bus routes and routing to ensure that we're meeting all the, making things as efficient as possible. And so part of this will be continued advocacy, but also that continued engagement between our stakeholders and our office department.
Thank you. Thank you for your answers.
Well, the results, I had concerns last time with sort of what I called the poison pill way. These questions were asked on the survey, and I just had real concerns about that. But there's no study that indicates, or all studies indicate later start times for our older students is a good thing. There's volumes of literature supporting later start times. I'd be interested to know, Fairfax, Loudon, whoever's starting later, what, you know, impact that may have on student success. Our core mission is student success, and more than sometimes the opinion of folks, I have moved on what I believe will ensure our best student success. And so my interest continues to be looking at the volume of literature on this, continuing to seek more information, asking our students to advocate for this, looking to see other school districts. If other school districts are proving around the country that later start times for high school students is having an impact when they've made the change, I can't see how we don't do it at some point, even if we're shifting the whole day 30 minutes and keeping the order the same. But that's just, you know, one vote, but I'll continue to advocate on that as I continue to study this issue, and I appreciate all the work you guys have done. And congratulations, it was a, it looks like a lot of folks filled out the survey, probably one of our most robust survey responses. You know, when we survey things that are important to people, you know, we get a lot of engagement. So congratulations on that. Appreciate that. Okay. Any other questions, concerns?
Ms. Chairman, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We will now move to, what are we on next?
2101.
2101. All right, I will make a motion here. At this time, I move that the Prince William County School Board appointed Adele Jackson of the Brentsville District as a school board liaison to the Joint Environmental Task Force, and appointed Lisa Zargarpore of the Coles District as the alternate liaison. Do you have a second?
Ms. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I'd like to second that.
Ms. Williams seconds that. Any discussion? Great. Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay, wonderful. Next, we're going to move on to board matters, I think. Is that right? I haven't missed anything. Okay, so before we go to move board matters, this is our last school board meeting of the year. I have, you know, Ms. Williams has requested each board member gets five minutes this time to speak because of just the variety of nature of wrapping up the school year, so we'd like to do that. But before we adjourn and start board matters, I would like to take the time out to recognize Jim Lepp, our supervisor of media, his team for all they do each meeting. Tonight, along with Jim, and that team includes Mike Davis, Raul Rosado, Jimmy Davis, Mike Davis, Raul Rosado, Jimmy Davis, Marcos Salinas, and we can't forget our IT support in each meeting tonight. We have Elijah Wan Sim and Rashawn Ali. We appreciate all you do to support us. I also want to thank our security team, Jim Crow, Ron Crow, Ron Crow, sorry, so bad. Ron Crow, for all the work you've done all year in risk management to keep our schools safe, our students safe, and the work you've done here in the challenging environment we face all year. So I can't thank you enough. Dr. McDay, this wraps up your first year almost, and I want to thank you for all the work you have done also, and I'll have more to say that in my time. At this time, I will start. Who wants to go first? Anybody having, Mr. Wilk wants to go first.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Thank you, everyone. Well, to wrap things up, let's see. So, a lot of different events, as Dr. Latif mentioned, which is why it's great we have the five minutes. So this all started back June 2nd. I was happy to attend the Committee of 100 Black Women hosted a girls mentoring program at Dumfries Elementary led by Dr. Alice Howard and her team. It was a great program that they continue to facilitate at Dumfries Elementary, and I was honored to be joined by Supervisor Bailey and Mayor Wood. 6:3 also then later. So Forest Park had an orchestra concert again. It was a really exciting concert. They did 80s medley at the end, so doing songs like Jump, Don't Stop Believin', and Livin' on a Prayer. That was pretty neat. Then, of course, there's the Independence Graduation, which was outstanding. Dr. Icorn and his team, that was truly a student-led celebration. Great to hear so many inspirational stories. I saw the one, that's a video that's circulating. I can't think of the young man's name, but he, yeah, Connor, yeah, and it had, I forget how many thousand views already. Truly inspirational story, and that's a testament to your program. So thank you. Then we did the Grill on the Hill, which is a Potomac High School senior tradition, where all the seniors go out to the football field area, and I got to run the snow cone station. That was awesome. Yes. Then we had the high school graduation ceremony for Potomac High School, and then next day, the, what was, oh, yes, the nurse, the capping and graduation reception for the practical nursing. That was my first time going to a program like that. That was phenomenal at OP. Never had been to something like that, and definitely will be back, where we recognized, I think, 16 graduates for that program. So we're on to the next week. So we had the Forest Park Academic Award Ceremony. In all these like events, I try to give like speeches, appropriate grade level-wise for like what I talk about with the books and stuff. This one was cool because it just so happened the weekend before, my sister found the VHS of 20 years ago. I did my senior class president speech in my high school graduation, and so I tried to have a correlation of the message I gave 20 years ago, if it's, Denise Huber's like, yeah, party, looking back and see if there is correlation in the message, and, you know, it was good. It was a fun time. And so then next, kindergarten promotion ceremony in Montclair. Like I said, at these events, I like to actually go into the audience and talk to the kids and actually direct my little speech to them. And this one was a cool one because I let the kids talk in the mic and do kind of part of the speech. So we talked about, one of my principals recommended a book called The Kissing Hand, which is the little raccoon, Chester Raccoon, goes off to his first day of school and gives his mom a kiss in his hand, and little Chester gets stronger and braver, and then he gives his mom a kiss, and it's all about, again, the idea, you know, you go on, you get brave, and your parents will always be there. So that was, that was a good thing. I did that also at another event, too. Later that, I hosted a pizza party for Potomac Middle School Robotics Program to recognize their success going to Worlds and beyond. Oh, my God, time's flying. Okay, 6:9, fifth grade promotion ceremony, then the Forest Park graduation ceremony on 6:10. 6:10, I also had the pleasure before that of attending and doing two sessions at the Career Day at Henderson Elementary. Yeah, kindergartners loved hearing about sales. Woo! Later that evening, I chaperoned the Potomac Shores Middle School inaugural eighth-grade dance on 6:14. I ended up coaching my son's last T-ball game, but then ran over to Montclair's fifth grade promotion night. That was fun. Good wardrobe for that. Then Swan's Creek Kindergarten Promotion Ceremony the next day, and then yesterday was a fun-filled day. I know a couple of my colleagues did all this stuff, too, attended multiple events. Started at Mary Williams Den Celebration Day, then the fifth grade promotions parade at Patty. Outdoor ceremony at Henderson for them, and then ended the night at Ashland. I would be remiss if I didn't thank our amazing principals, Principal Houseworth, Granby, Ciro, Schott, Parks, Luciotti, Whitney, Devers, Johnson, new Principal Graham Park, Walker, Smith, Mergo, Martinez, Bowles, and Dr. Icorn of the Potomac District. Thank you so much for a tremendous year, a lot of work that went into this. And finally, Al, thank you so much. You were a godsend for me a year ago, especially when I was literally calling you all the time, and you've definitely helped me a lot. Most, let's, you know, all the good times and the bus stops and everything you've done for me. So you will be missed. Thank you so much, and thank you, everyone. Wish everyone a great summer.
Ms. Zargarpore?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. So first of all, I want to say, Dr. McDay, you've been here just about a year, so congratulations on your first year. I think my favorite part of all of this was, sorry, the strategic plan, because I'm a little, I like that stuff. I, it's, I'm doing a program, a study now, so I'm really appreciating the thoughtfulness behind all of the things that are going into it that are meant to improve outcomes for our students. And one of my other favorite things about you that you, you get, that was important to me at least, was that, you know, our kids leave us. We spend, maybe it's pre-K, but K through 12, and we prepare them and we wish them well, and then I hope we've prepared them well enough so that they're successful. So I really appreciate that. We're going to do a little more to find out what they need, if they needed something, how they're doing, things like that. Al, we're going to miss you. I'm so glad you put up with my questions and things like that. Thank you for the windows at OP. Thank you for the, for all the things. Best of, best wishes and luck to you in your, you're headed to North Carolina, correct? Yes. So, we'll come visit. Yeah, it'd be nice. All right. I want to also say thank you to the many parents that I've been speaking with lately who have been sharing their concerns about safety and security. I went ahead and arranged a town hall with Chief Newsome. It'll be on July 7th at 7:00 PM at Darrell Nor. I got to hear him talk with the Dale City Civic Association. He does a fantastic presentation talking about what our community in Prince William County looks like, what our area of concerns are. So I think he's going to have a lot to bring to this conversation, so I invite you to come. So it's 7:00 PM, July 7th at Darrell Nor, which is the mosque on Holy Road. I want to, yeah, we all went to a bunch of things. I had, I teach during the day, so I could not make any of the during-the-day things, but it was really nice to have some of the folks in my community share their pictures and share their stories. And one I thought was really, really special was there, when a child was graduating, a child, a young man was graduating from Colgan High School, and they arranged a kind of a private ceremony, because this child was not comfortable walking in front of everybody at the graduation ceremony. So really thankful that we have administrators that understand that sometimes our students need something a little bit different in life. Want to say Hilton High School, David Cassidy is retiring, and he was one of the first people, when I first got on the board, who invited me over, and when the pandemic hit, he, I saw how hard he was working to make sure that the school was safe. He used to have this big piece of, this big piece of wood that was six feet long, that they would measure out the spaces. And then, because the school's under construction, he's had to move things multiple times. And so dealing with all of that, I'm sure he's just going to really enjoy his time off here. I do hear that he will be wrapping with us, so that'll be great. We are going to be welcoming Cassandra Crawford, who I understand was a teacher once at Hilton High School, so welcome back. Want to also say, welcome to Mr. Harris. I said hello during the break. Thank you for hanging out with us tonight. Hopefully, we won't have meetings as long as this, but welcome to the area. Let's see, what is, oh, oh, oh. You know, I keep saying this, but it was so stunning when I went to the Colgan Award Ceremony and listening to the achievements of our students, and, and, and they don't do that alone. They've got parents who are supporting them, they've got teachers who are supporting them, and all kinds of counselors and all these people. Our kids at Colgan walked away with $16 million in offers and scholarships. Osborne Park had $16.9 million, and Hilton had upwards of $6 million. And this is really remarkable that our kids are able to move on into whatever the next portion of their life is going to be, whether it's military. We had several had military commissions. We had several who are going on into the military, enlisting. We have several who are going to go to a community college, several had scholarships to universities. It's, oh, and then, and then not even to mention the CTE programs, where we have kids who are getting jobs right away. We have a lot to offer our kids, and, but I want to make sure that we're doing our best to make sure they're really set up for life. I'll leave you with this. When I was a kid, when we were getting out of school, we would say, no more pencils, no more books, no more teachers, dirty looks. I wish you all a safe and beautiful summer.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. So I have been to so many great events. It's hard to capture them all, but I'll start out with one at Bull Run. There was a very special concert held last week with the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade orchestras combined in a farewell concert for Mrs. Leslie Gledick, who was the orchestra teacher there, and two of my children had the privilege of being in her class three years in a row for each of them. So I was able to be there, to speak to her greatness, and it was a really, really special event, and a lot of people participated in making that really special. So to all our retirees and to those who are moving on to other adventures, thank you for your service in Prince William County Schools, and to our children. We really do value the sacrifices that you have made, and your impact will be felt for generations, I have no doubt. I was able to go to some really great graduations. It started out, the graduation season for me started out at Pace West, which is a wonderful school, and they do amazing work there, and it was a very special intimate, small graduation, and those students are fantastic and amazing. The staff is just completely dedicated. In between all the graduations, I had the opportunity to help or work on an ongoing traffic situation at Battlefield High School. For many years, the school struggled with terrible traffic in the mornings and in the afternoons. I look forward to making progress on that with the school. I was able to attend probably, well, yes, I feel like I have a pent-up supply of needing to go to graduations since, you know, third year of graduations in Prince William County Schools, and this is the first time I've been able to go to all these graduations, so Potomac, TJ, Battlefield, Unity, Bull Run, sorry, that's not one, Woodbridge, Forest Park, Brentsville, Colgan, and Freedom, which was really awesome, because I felt like everybody, they were all, you were all my children, and every single person was, every graduation was unique, and had its own flavor and its own culture, and it was, it was just really fun. So thank you for everybody for allowing me to come to celebrate with you. And in addition to that, I did go to an, an field day at Sinclair Elementary School, which I just have to say, wow, the staff put that on, and I think they had 21 stations. I mean, unbelievable. It was the most fun and crazy field day I think I've ever attended. A close second would be Reagan's, which was also, wow, amazing, and Bull Runs as well. For fifth grade promotions, I was able to go to Mountain View, Mullen, Alvy, and Gravely, and Alvy's in particular was really funny, because they just highlighted every single child's like goal for what they wanted to be when they grew up, and, you know, and it struck me that not one said they wanted to be a school board member. I don't know why they didn't say that, but anyway, it was just, it was so cute and so touching to see their young hopes and dreams for themselves. And I also want to highlight at Mullen, and Mrs. Ellington is retiring, so congratulations to Mrs. Ellington, the principal there, on her retirement and her many years of service to Prince William County Schools. I thoroughly enjoyed cheering for all of the kids for their different awards, and the best part was seeing how excited they were when one of their friend's names, when their friend was called for an award. That was almost more exciting than when their own name was called. And equally fun to see was the surprise when their own names were called, especially at the elementary school level. These children are so full of love and kindness and appreciation for their friends. It was really touching to see the kindness evident in their faces and in their actions. I know now we are at the closing of a chapter, because it's the end of a school year. We get, we regroup and we open back up again. Just, my final words would be, remember to keep learning. Remember to keep reading. Remember to say thank you to the people who love you and support you, and remember to improve yourself every day, and remember to be kind. And other than that, have a most wonderful summer.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we bring this historic academic school year to a close, it is time to look into the future for what is to come, and a time to reflect on what has been accomplished. In doing so, I'd like to start with our historic accomplishments this year. Hiring our first African-American female superintendent in the school division history, bears worth repeating as much as we possibly can. She came in blazing trails by crafting a new strategic plan and a new motto of thriving futures. To complement this new strategic plan, a budget was developed in line to fund the priorities laid out in our approved, in our approved strategic plan. This budget provided not only equitable funding for all of our students, but a historic raise for our teachers and staff. Let's not forget the increase in community and business partnerships that continue to grow to this day, and let's not forget to highlight our 84 CTE students who graduated this year with careers right out the gate. Virtual school started off to, started off quite bumpy, but ended successful and will continue into the next school year to service those students who need it and for those who thrive in its environment. Now, like many of my board members, I attended many graduations, somewhere around 11, to include nursing, EIP, Mary Porter's Blue Ribbon Ceremony, Gov. School, and our traditional high schools. All in all, it was a time to celebrate students' accomplishments. I'd like to take this time to highlight a few of our deserving staff and recognize their accomplishments. First, our retiring INS principal, Dr. Robert Icorn, who I was blessed to be able to have entered into the congressional record, so that his legacy will continue, not only in Prince William County Schools, but in our nation's history. And secondly, just a brief moment of a personal congratulations to Dr. Daria Grover, who's the Featherstone Elementary School principal, for serving my family so well, but for being one of my favorite principals, for giving all of her fifth graders a book upon promotion ceremony, which is the reason I fell in love with Featherstone way before my children attended. I wish to you and all the retiring principals the very best. I hope that all of our PWCS families and staff engage in learning during the summer and continue by either participating in our enrichment programs, first in the history, our school programming, our academic school programming, or library reading. Now, because I started the school year off at Freedom with our superintendent, I want to end our school year off with talking about freedom. I am so excited that I get to represent the school, and they continue to make me proud. And at this moment, I'd like to bring up one of our graduates from Freedom High School to honor her, Ms. Jackson. I believe she's still in the audience, Ms. Jackson, are you still here? If you come to the podium real quick, I think there's a picture of you that's going to go up. Trying to move really fast. So I am asking her to come up to celebrate her for her accomplishments, because I always brag on our Freedom High School students, the Soul Squad, because I'm a huge fan. I turn to complete nut when marching bands appear. But I want to credit her for being the first in Norfolk State University, congratulations on being accepted there, the first in Norfolk State's history marching band leader. Did I say that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. So she is the first female to do so. She's a proud graduate of Prince William County Schools. I want to give credit, because I'm running out of time, to Mr. Thomas Thurgood and Mr. Pajers Prater, excuse me, I'm trying to rush, for their instrumental service to our Freedom High School, Freedom High School marching band program, and for all the work they do. I believe Delegate King was also in service at that time when you were at the school, and I just want to take this opportunity, since we're closing out, to give you the last minute to speak your piece and share some of your accomplishments and making PWCS proud.
Thank you so much, Ms. Williams, and thank you all for having me be here. It's truly an honor. I would first like to thank my amazing mother and my father, who have always supported me 100% on this journey. And I would also like to thank Mr. Thurgood, Mr. Prater, and Ms. King, all who are mentors of me. I graduated Freedom High School in the year 2018 and then went on to continue my education at Norfolk State University, where their leadership, their hard work, their determination, and their teachings are what caused me to develop a love for band. And I am proud to say that I am the first female drum major in the history of the Spartan Legion at Norfolk State University. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, for providing us an update of what our students do when they leave our school division. And I just want to say again, thank you to Freedom High School.
Nicely done, Ms. Williams. Ms. Jessie.
Before you hit the buzzer, you talked about superintendent. I have provided her with a cup. Could you please show your cup? And I want to thank you for coming to the school system. I knew something was different when she decided that she could actually hit all those schools. The other superintendent, not that he was older, it took him a little bit longer time to visit all those schools, and when you visited all those schools, I think within a month or so, that was one thing. The strategic plan was another thing. Of course, the unfinished learning plan, the briefings that you allowed us to have and have input, I really appreciate what you've done. I am going to be a little bit different tonight. I'd like to devote my time to recognize Mr. Bob Ikorn. On May 18th, I learned that he was leaving, and on May 19th, I called his school to down south, we called it to fuss at him for leaving. And I ran into this lady named Jan Smith, who said, Mrs. Jessie, how do we name something in his honor? And I said, well, I can help you start the process. And we have begun the process. The process will not take place in this school year because we started a little bit late. It will be next year. But I would like for him to stand and to, today we honored him. And Jan, please stand and show that we have a notebook full of letters. And Dr. Ikorn, I really appreciate you. And so for him, I want to thank you for helping to make whole our children, who are sometimes maybe fragmented and imperfect human beings. And for all of us, every school here, Dr. Ikorn made a difference in their lives. And so I have a video that I'd like to show because we did school board briefing, and I think you'll enjoy this video, and I think it's a good way to end the night.
It's about mantra, it's about always reviewing and reflecting on what makes us strong. And what makes us strong at Independence Non-Traditional School is being a part of the pack.
Buildings have feelings, and that's especially true of schools. Hi, I'm Lily Jessie, School Board Vice Chairman and Representative for the Okaquan District. As a board member, I visit schools frequently, and know there's something special about certain schools the moment I enter. Independence Non-Traditional School is a prime example. Here, every hallway, every room highlights its goals. It's not something you can always put your finger on, but the feeling you get stems from the culture of the school. Culture is hard to define, but it can be described as a school's written or unwritten rules and beliefs. Culture consists of mottos, words, actions, but also physical representation through artifacts, visual symbols, and yes, even architecture in a school. High-performing schools blend visual symbols with their mission and purpose. How do these strong, positive cultures come about? Through the efforts of school leaders. Bob Ikorn, the principal of Independence, put much time and thought into selecting murals, quotes, and banners that support the school mission of high performance.
When we were developing Independence Non-Traditional School, stakeholder involvement in creating that vision was integral. Now, the students developed the name, the students developed the motto, the colors, the Wolves were selected as our motto. Wolves run in packs, you're stronger in the pack than as an individual. One of the things that I want to share is the parable of the Cherokee chief speaking with his grandson. His grandfather shares that there's something terrible going on inside of all of us. There are two wolves fighting. One wolf is greed and anger and frustration, just malevolence, and the other wolf is love and kindness and care and helpfulness, and these wolves are constantly fighting. And the grandson asked the question of the chief, which one wins? And the grandfather says, the one you feed. What's really important as part of our school culture is develop that integrity as part of our school vision, because when you focus on the positive, you have positive results.
Everyone is just completely together as one, where it's like a family. It's like a family for school, a family of learning.
School cultures include the celebration of heroes and heroines. Independence has named the media center in honor of the late Dr. Renee Lacy. Dr. Lacy is a true local heroine who dedicated her life to be a champion for alternative learning and highlighting the academic gifts of all children. She most certainly reflected the values held by the independent school community. The walls here at Independent Non-Traditional School have become universities of knowledge and hope for students. At one time, this enormous devotion to establishing such an expansive physical culture was labeled fluff because it was thought that it did not contribute to student learning. The research finds the opposite. Culture is a powerful force, and I'm proud to see many of our schools in Prince William County continuing to create and grow a positive culture where everyone thrives. I leave you with the words of renowned researcher, Dr. Peter Drucker. Culture will eat instructional strategy for breakfast any day of the week. Or, as one student put it, you can't help but learn in a school that looks and feels like this.
Thank you for what you've done for all of us, because you took those kids that no one else could work with, and I want to make sure that at least this board met you tonight. And we'll work on the naming in the future. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Ms. Ralston. Okay. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I want to thank everyone who has written to me over the past few weeks for their input on collective bargaining. I will be catching up on emails sent this week regarding, you know, other concerns in the Brentsville district on Friday, and I apologize for any delay. I'm excited and thankful for Brentsville District's high school recent award of funds to approve the contract for the construction of the sodium restrooms at the Brentsville District High School and the contract for the track renovation and field conversion. This is much-needed infrastructure update to one of Prince William County's oldest schools, and I just again want to say thank you, Mr. Shiroki, for your commitment and dedication and your service. You're going to be missed. Congratulations to Zawi Melendez-Manguia, a chorus teacher at Gainesville Middle School, who has been named a quarterfinalist for 2023 Grammy Music Educator Award. The Music Educator Award was established to recognize current teachers who have made a significant and lasting contribution in the field of music education and who demonstrated commitment to the broader cause of maintaining music education. So she will be recognized during Grammy Week of 2023, a joint partnership and presentation at the Recording Academy and the Grammy Museum. I have seen the Gainesville Choral Students live a few times, and they are amazingly talented. Mr. Ikorn, I know we've only met a few times, but I just wanted to just say briefly how much I appreciate you. I did attend a training at your school. I don't remember the training, but I do remember your school and the culture that I felt even when the students were gone. So just thank you for your service. Brentsville sadly losing two principals this season. Thank you to Ms. Julie Svensson and Ms. Kathy Notice for the years of service. Julie Svensson served 21 years at Westgate, she was a classroom teacher, then an assistant principal, and last, a principal for seven years. She is going to be missed. I was recently there for a field day and a science fair, and Westgate has like a family feel, and, you know, she really is going to be missed, and I wish her all the best. I was also lucky to attend Ms. Notice's retirement ceremony. Ms. Notice also dedicated her life to education and opened Chris Young. Every time I visit Chris Young, I could feel how welcoming that school is, and I wish her all the best on her new chapter. I thank both of them for their service to Prince William County Schools and to the Brentsville District. Buckland Mills will also be getting a new leader, Kelly Strad at Buckland Mills, who's been there for six years. She is opening the school at Rosemont, and I'm excited that Brentsville gets to keep her, but I know that change is, you know, sometimes hard, and I just wish everybody the best. The leadership at a school sets the tone, sets the bars, sets the atmosphere, and I'm so grateful for all of these leaders. I also attended a number of graduations. I attended Patriot, Pierce West, Unity Reed, Battlefield, Woodbridge, Prince William County School, Practical Nursing, and Hilton High School. I was very fortunate to be able to visit Ellis Elementary to celebrate the fifth graders, celebrate awards at Knottsville School, fifth grade graduation at T. Clay Wood, catch up with some administrators. This week, some visits and see some field days, and just thank you to all the schools that invited me to the end-of-the-year celebrations. It is wonderful to watch our resilient students succeed and have their success celebrated. Congratulations to all kindergarten, fifth grade, eighth grade, and high school graduates. It's exciting to start a new chapter, and I wish you all the best. I was also fortunate to be a shark at Bristow Run, like Shark Tank, and I'm just, I was really impressed with, you know, I know the amount of work that the teacher put in, Ms. Hills, and just thank you for the invitation by Ms. Jack and Ms. Hills. And those inventions that the students, you know, presented were amazing, and their negotiating skills were really impressive. Thank you to the members of the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Sustainability, you're making a difference, especially to Brentsville District's representative, Dakota Russell. She is a great advocate and a recent graduate from Patriot. Congratulations and best of luck in your next chapter. As I conclude tonight's thoughts, I hope that regardless of what side of the vote you are on, I hope, you know, I considered all viewpoints. And I encourage all leaders today to lead with love and acceptance, to create unity in conversations, to treat others as we would like to be treated, to show our true intent and continue to model kindness. I want to end my thoughts on taking a moment to thank my own young ones at home. I know it is hard for you to share my time with so many others, and I'm thankful for your patience, resilience, and kindness. I am sending love to all Prince William County Schools and to my Brentsville constituents. A huge thank you to Dr. McDade and her team and to all Prince William County staff, and I wish everybody a wonderful and safe summer break.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. All right, first and foremost, some controversy over Marshall Elementary School this past week. I want it to be clear, you know, my kids go there, I've been a part of that community for 13 years. My student, my last one just finished there, had his promotion ceremony, was there when Ms. Heebner was a principal there, and Kay Hermeling, you know, was there with that school, and it truly is the best elementary school in America. Okay. And it has the best library and the best librarian. I have advocated from the beginning of freedom to choose to come into school. I was constantly pushing to reopen, a freedom to mask or not. I believe in the freedom of speech, and I believe in the freedom to read what you like. Okay? I believe that our librarians have done a terrific job, and they will continue to do a great job, and I fully support their efforts at all of our libraries. I've had a great last couple of weeks. I went to three graduations, Garfield, Colgan, Unity Reed, outstanding, terrific commencement ceremonies, great to be back in person, fantastic. I got to attend the Project Search graduation at UVA Community Health, formerly known as Novant, where we take our special ed students, some of them, they're allowed to go to school till they're 20, 21 here in this system still, and in their last year, they can do an internship over at the hospital. Six of them graduated after spending most of this year interning in a variety of different departments at the hospital. It was an incredible ceremony. Kudos to Michelle Roper, Dr. Roper, her team, the folks over at Novant Hospital, UVA Community Health for a great program they have there. I recommend highly that all of you go over there and take a look at that program at some point. I went to the Cappies. Cappies are an annual event that celebrates our fine and performing theater students, you know, from around the region, heavily Fairfax and DC, Montgomery. We had Osborne Park participating. I want to see more of our Prince William County Schools participate in the Cappies, and I'd love to see that. It's a fabulous event at the Kennedy Performing Arts Center. The state of our schools, from my standpoint, is strong, and it's going to continue to get stronger. I ran on student success, safety and security, space and infrastructure, and salaries. On student success, we have celebrated the success of our students with thriving futures, our robotics, our sports, our national merit finalists. We've had a record number of scholarship dollars won by our high schools this year. Unity Reed hit 10 million this year, and you heard some of the other numbers already. Record numbers. We had a signing fair for, we had a job fair here, where I think 295, 300 students almost left with a job. We had CTE students leaving with jobs this year, and we've continued to improve and, you know, push our students hard for college, two-year and four-year. But we have a ways to go. There was a lot we lost in the pandemic. There are test scores that need to be brought up. There is work and loss of learning that needs to be replaced, and we have a robust summer program set up by Dr. McDade and the team for enrichment, for remediation, for all sorts of programs. Please, there are spots still available, if there are, please go to the websites and take a look at that. That is our student success. On salaries, we have done on top of 7% this year, 5% the prior year, 2.4 before that, 4.8 and 4.8, five years in a row. We have a record set of raises. No other division can match in the Commonwealth. We have done this by prioritizing it. They could have done it before I got here, but they didn't because they didn't prioritize it. This is a priority. I made it a priority to come in and make sure all of our staff got paid more, and that got done. Safety and security, we continue to review our safety and security protocols at our schools. It is in constant review. I get a lot of emails from parents concerned when there's a shooting, when there's this, when there's that happening. I understand it. This entire board feels the weight of this. There's not a day that goes by that we don't fear opening an email and seeing something we don't want to see. It is the heaviest weight we carry. It is the heaviest weight Dr. McDade carries in this entire division, and we take this with the most serious and utmost sacred, you know, concern. So I want you to know we do that. Space and infrastructure, energy and sustainability, you heard about this. We had a successful first year for Gainesville and Potomac Shores. We still have work to do. We got to get bus drivers, and we need to electrify our fleet because gas is costing us an arm and a leg. Finally, wrapping up this first year with Dr. McDade, I appreciate her thoughtfulness, methodical effort at evaluating our school division, her resourcefulness, putting together a strategic plan, all efforts aligned with that strategic plan. She has overseen a record increase in funding from the Board of County Supervisors. That wasn't an accident. That was by building relationships. Dr. McDade went over to the Board of County Supervisors, she's met with all of them, she's worked with her staff, she's committed to listening to our local elected leaders and our communities, she's created relationships to do so. And that has resulted in a record amount of money coming from the county board this year for our schools with new funding sources. And Dr. McDade, your weekend, your weekly emails are extremely popular, they're powerful, and they continue to promote the success of our school division. I hope you continue them during the summer. I think the student, our families would love to hear from you. We don't want to miss you. I know you want to go on break, but I want to thank you for your efforts this year for our school division. It's been a wonderful first year. I want to thank the school board for all of their efforts this year. You know, it is not easy being a school board member. It has been, it has been challenging. And I want to thank our public for their patience, our parents for their patience, our staff for their commitment to getting us through this year. It has been a remarkable time in schools, in school histories, in crisis management, and we have all learned something, and we continue to learn. All the best, and congratulations, the most congratulations to our recent graduates, and we wish them the best, and may God and success and happiness follow them always wherever they go. Thank you, and this adjourns our academic year's worth of meetings.